Sireleli Afrika Maluka isu pololayo Isuaini tana soyejú O si sirele la China nusapolayo Nukela buluka si chabasa esu Kute liseli tchali masweli
Use buluke
Use buluke si chabasa esu Si chabasa, South Africa, South Africa Edi kufa moseyira Edi kidera moseyira Unsiilbe hervebes Aniklanse ankofi South Africans come together And united we shall stand Let us live as one In South Africa Thank you very much.
Re yale boja.
I would like to take this opportunity to greet you all.
Keratah otsasaba kase ni seholu du medik salote.
And maybe render an apology that we are starting late.
Nibile rapatah oko patswarelo ya hobo ri simola marahonya na kanako.
It is not of our own doing.
Khazemo kha orhansiri tirankaone.
But taxis from other areas were late, are still late.
Me bato baba zamangadi taxi ilohu zaka ma filong afar lohaneng ditamarahana ko babangmasa zana basile wakena ko.
But we decided to start because we are told that they are almost outside.
Me rabatah osimola kahora rasa tchahobolela horre bakafante.
So they will find us on our way.
Kabata re fikala rezu lezi.
We are a portfolio committee of mineral resources and energy from the National Assembly.
Re komiteya portfolio ya di tompe lozadi minerali le energy hozwa kua kua nombo si chaba.
In the Parliament of the Republic of South Africa.
Ilengwa Parlamentenyarapablikia Afrikabora.
Just a quick introduction of honorable members.
Ne hulu itisi kabukutuane malokarona achotechang.
On the far left, we have Honorable Phillips from the Democratic Alliance.
Ralimotoke Phillips wa Democratic Alliance kakomuleme wame.
We have Honorable Zungula from the ATM.
Me ralimotoke Zungula wa ATM.
We have Honorable Malinga from the African National Congress.
Mototeke Malinga wa African National Congress.
We have Honorable Volmarans from the African National Congress.
Rinali mototeke Volmarans wa African National Congress.
We have Honorable Makeke Chobege from the African National Congress.
Rinali mototeke Makeke Chobege lena African National Congress.
We have Honorable Motsepe from the Economic Freedom Fighters.
Mototeke Motsepe wa Economic Freedom Fighters.
We have another gentleman that was Honorable Jaffta. Okay, in his absence, we have Honorable Jaffta from AIC.
Me kapera taluitisi le mototeke Jaffta khodahoho AIC ha isi anetinfano.
And then we have Honorable Bilangulu from the African National Congress.
Le mototeke Bilangulu khodzahoho African National Congress.
I will tell you why I was mentioning who comes from where.
Na ntsakele bulela habatsana khorohotse namang le khorohuzakai.
My name is Mika Tegomalshawule from the African National Congress.
Na ki tchwa African National Congress ki na mototeke Masawale.
I'm an acting chair of this portfolio committee since our chairperson is bereaved and he had to bury his loved one.
Ki dula sitiloanama osatwe eka jorne mutula sitilo warona o tchage twekelu me onachana lakajora bayo hufika mongowa le lapalacha abo.
We are here today
Rafano kumpieno.
To source your wisdom
Khotahopatlabotchale mocholona.
On a bill called the Upstream Petroleum Resources Development Bill.
Yamo lawo chomo oru bizankore ki mo lawo chomo wahochotra kadizompe lozadi minerali za petroleum, motse di epilue.
By requirement of law
Eh koyakawela emo lawo obatalankayone.
That we must do so.
Obatah khorere ridire yalo.
We are not ticking a box, but we would want to listen to you, take your valuable opinions and put them into a bill to make the law.
Rabatah ukuadin chata lona rolo reza jakahali di tchwaela rebere di jati ya mocholuhudijahora rochonuhudizenyeleza moten hamala o chomo warona.
We are aware that we normally dispatch a team to come and do workshops in different areas.
Seri sitin kohora hansiru romela sutchotwa na kuapele kharona kore esatla kohdi ra di patisiso leho inakanya le maloko alifilo leritla kohle tela.
But when we were busy doing rounds in different provinces, we often get that the workshops were not enough.
Me ineyara harinserza ma modi profession sedin tedi farlohaneng rafikala khoridi workshop sedin nditwe dine disa ne wana ko elekanee.
So I beg that you are patient with me as I take you slowly on what the bill seeks to achieve.
Kajalo kiko pahore eh lonne pelelele na jakakaki tabekelo tchale setaka wike tchoki ke kilasen kahore molakomo onu osentente wama nalie.
The bill is Upstream Petroleum Resources Development Bill. The operative word, the operative word is upstream petroleum.
Molakomo onu oki molakomo wahochotra kadizompe lozadi minerali za petroleum, motse di epiluing me utela choko kore mafoko akono konofano ki upstream le petroleum. Merakaza marinsera tchalo sakastwa.
Now, let's start with those definitions. What is upstream? What is upstream?
Koraharibuaka upstream, upstreami ke e.
Upstream is an exploration and production of crude oil and gas.
So upstream kamanzama nyoneki ho epolola kapele kachiso ya oli e ele mosemo sayene sacha.
So when you have up, you will have down. So there is downstream.
So how ribuaka up kamanzama ngakarole ekohudi mo mochoran khorahaper nali downstream.
What is downstream?
Janon downstreami yoneki e.
The process applied after extraction through to it being delivered to the customer. In other words, when you have explored and produced the process of extracting it and making it developed and taking to a consumer which is you.
Kamanzama ngak downstreami janu etan nakanya haisesi epolo tchehoza re epolola rebere re ichotcha re ichotcha janana ele kore ete iqone hui siwa koba thumba ilimba dirisi bayone jaka lona yana khoraba idiris.
Now, where is exploration done?
Janu rekare hua epolola khayone karolo eyo yeone izana faka.
It's done in onshore and offshore.
Idira mo karolo ya mufera o tchwaile xiling kape idira erekebe kama foko awa asokhowa bayibiza khorki offshore le inshore.
What is offshore?
Janu arakhalo sakhora haribuaka offshore, offshore ki e.
Offshore is the exploration that is done at the bottom of the ocean.
Janu offshore ki hari epolola di minerali zenu zeridi epolola khodzakopotinting halawaki.
Onshore is obviously what you do inland.
Janu haribuaka onshore ribuaka di zeridi epololan mohudi mochala fela ha muo tchwaile xiling.
Now, we have just defined five operative words.
Janu rasa tchahora tchalo sa mafoko atiriso alema chanu amanani seno.
Exploration, upstream, downstream, offshore, and onshore.
Ileng exploration, upstream, downstream, onshore, le offshore.
Now, why was it difficult, why was it important so that we define those words?
Ki hulibo choh kahore re lonne di tchalo sa zamafoko ano.
So that when I explain what the bill seeks to achieve, you are slowly but surely going with me along.
Ki tirala kore era hake tchalo sa buikalolo jama lakomo onu o lobolu zama isa na sentelele na lon tchalo ha.
First and foremost, this bill seeks to split petroleum and minerals.
So san kanka buikalolo jama lakomo onu o ke ho kauha nya di minerali le petroleum.
So that important aspects of a legislation that speaks to petroleum is properly covered in petroleum and what is important for minerals is properly captured in the mineral aspect.
Senu ke hohdirala khorre molao opefela o amanang le petroleum enakanya khoromo lao o o agarazadi inkazochla sedi amanang leone senteleka tchwanelo lehohidra khorabo lao o laolang di minerali leone enakanya khorobokonaha agarazadi inkazochla sedi amanasente li di minerali eyo tseu kachwanelo.
That becomes important for the industry to stabilize and have security.
Kajalo honabochokahora di industry di hohno kohdira kore tiro eune ine tiro elo kore ichoma mesente ibilisi reletse xila idira katsireletse.
Now, let's start with the objectives of the bill.
Janu haribuengama ikomo maholo amo lawo chomo.
It says the orderly development of petroleum resources.
Ibu afano faka eh hototsuaha di minerali za petroleum katsela e iichoma mingsentehoza e ru lakantwen sente.
Now, let me explain this properly.
Janu ereke tchalo sakhora kira janha kiresi utirakatswanelo.
And can you please translate when I'm done with this point?
Okay.
Yeah, so I will give an example of, and Makua members will understand. I'll give you an example of what happened in the Central Karoo. The discovery of gas, shale gas in the Central Karoo, which is puts us at number two in terms of the wealth of gas in the world. But we can't explore, we can't extract it because of the environmental aspects. Now, for you to do exploration and production in an orderly manner, you must be subscribed to the constitutional provisions that says you will extract the minerals beneath the soil in a manner that does not upset the climate and the environment.
Oh, okay, ready, all right. So tchalo sa afano faki kore rabatah kholanasi ka isesetranale sa go Central Karoo eh huidiruwé eh houdiscoverule gas kolefelo lele ntsanjalo. Janu kahora lete senu sidira khororoona renne number two molifashe haratamo kanyanya ba to ba obanale gas mariano botado borunale bone kahore hari qone hui epolola kalebaga la kore retsana tchore relatalele di karolo di motse di bochokaze tchwanzenza ratamisa nalejona kore ridire seu kasekai molao teu kasa constitution ibonsa kore mu tu kore reqone hui epolola retsana tchore ratamisane leme lawana ya yo ne lehori hari dirajalo rese kera senyatikolo.
So orderly development of resources means a balance between economic development and the environmental aspect.
Kajalo seusera khorotchwanzo khorobolo ke teka teka no fahara khadilwe sepeidi se ekonomi moholi etikolo.
And there must be equitable access to these resources.
Me bile ba to bata tchwanzo khoroba di fikale ba fikalele di minerali zenohosa di tompe lozena kateka teka.
Meaning all of us as South Africans must have access to these resources.
Seu ileng sesera khorona bojema Afrikabora retsana tchore reqone hui fikalela eh di tompe lozeno.
And therefore, there must be active state participation in the petroleum resources development.
Ne khorobone kohdirajalo puso leone etsana tchore ezeka rolo katshahafalo mo kanyenyeno ya khabololo ya di minerali zeno za petroleum.
As well as active black persons participation.
Moholo khodzaya karolo katshahafalo kabancho eh motiro eeno ya di tompe.
Now, the separation of these two aspects were combined in what you call NPRDA.
Janu eh ho kauha nga kaya di karolo zenu sepeidi di minerali eh moholi petroleum motine di kopanze eh momola onu oru bizahore ke NPRDA.
Where if you wanted to do exploration, you would apply for the right to do exploration. And when you discover that there is oil or there is gas, you needed again to go and apply for a mineral right to extract the oil that you discovered. So two separate rights for one mineral resource.
Moho rango re inetara ha obatah udi epolola obotshana tchore otsenyaku popeli ya hohdira eh tiro eyo ya huaipa di tompe lozeno koro udi born me itara ha nzo oli ochara kanelo hodi epa arano kongo obos discovera gas kota di minerali di motse di irelen otsanzo kori udu tchohale fo oza maya kape wohidra kopo ewuwe ya e yo ne etan nan kopa ya horo oneli di tchwanelo za hohdiraka di karolo zeni ntsanjalo kadi tompe lozeni ntsanjalo. So kora kore ki di kopo sepeidi tseu tchwanzengwa di dira khorobone hudi rakadi karolo tseu sepeidi sedi amanani di di tompe lozeno tarona.
So this bill suggests that the petroleum right and the exploration right must be combined, it must be integrated.
Kajalo molakomo warona kumpieno jan o kaya fano kore di tchwanelo za di minerali leza petroleum di tchwanzo kore janu in di kopanwe.
Meaning the exploration and the extraction are covered in one right.
Moho rango re huaipa di tompe lo eh moholo khodi tchotcha osna honale zone di agare diwa kafatasha di tchwanolo dilidi ewuwe.
Now, it also provide for the right holder to sell the percentages of petroleum to the state for strategic stock reservation, preservation. Now, I'll expand on this point after you translate what I just said.
Can you repeat it again? I thought you are continuing.
No, I want to explain this point after you have said what I have just said. I can repeat.
Yes, if you can, can you repeat the last sentence you just said, please, Che?
I'm saying the petroleum right holder can sell the percentage of petroleum to the state for strategic stock requirement.
So ba to baba nangli di tchwanelo ba 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 kakhonachori janu sapashonzi kohsi dira kohora habana di tchwanalo sakohidraka di petroleum manele shonale ya koreki seta puso di percente di motse di irelen kabika lo ba khorobone kasa kupuso ba khonohua hui boloka mulifelo lele irelen.
Yeah, this is where I start. So every state, every country that takes itself serious has got what we say its strategic stock. What is strategic stock? Is oil that is kept for rainy days. What are rainy days you would have seen during Covid? We ran out of supply. Supply was just at a low level. Because the state, which is South Africa, has something stored somewhere for the country to at least survive at least 21 days without panicking. And we had strategic stock, that's where the intervention came from. Now, the clause is saying if Mika has got a right, a license, a petroleum right, and he has certain percentages which is hundred, he must give to the state a certain portion to store in the interest of the country.
Seresetchalo samfano faki kore puso unwe lewe kota naha unwe lewe ha elo khoraba zatiro eeno ya bone ma sisikasela e tchwanizing eh ba tchwanzo kore eh setoko sebananle sona sa di minerali zenu ze enakanya khoraba tachonahudi rakisa za puso erere beyan sesenensadira kha monakonyaruna kohore eh puso etsana tchore ebuluke kongo eole eeno ekanakoya hagonale matata kasekai kanakoya harnereli monakonyamo chaba Covid eh ba toba ilebala kachela kosa ba felola khotseleleke hasa akero eneyara hapasna kohfela kiona puso ebere kona kahotzaya eh mosetoko mo banemba ibuluki lete elo kore ete iqone kore reskerana kanya kora harana sepe sepe inelelete inena idirisu ya kora namo lamoma ema arner lemo kona kanako eyo ahochoka hasa and kasekai keli lonale bakaleu pola loana ya simola kosa engoya di tlosa rona sedi amanali di petroleum ibuya kore hasa tamose ngosisi relen senali eh di tompe lozeno kosa hasa ba tchwanzo khoroba thoma misa kore karolo engoya yono kosa di percente di motse di irelen za yoni dinewa puso elo kore yone eke iqone kora namola kanakoya harka zana ma matanga ahudi tchoka.
That is why the bill is calling for a designated state-owned company as an entity responsible for managing the state's interest in petroleum rights.
Lonale eh ho roto ediwankore retsana kona li di tamoze ilen korekeza puso se ilen kora haresa namoma antsanjalo enatshanelo libika rabelo jawbone khotchoma misa kore thula konya erbuangano eeno ya di raka diwa.
Let me explain this part.
Are are tchalo sa koyapi.
In South Africa, we now, and we have always had, a company called Petro SA. I'm sure everyone knows about Petro SA. That is a state-designated petroleum company. What this clause says, there must be a company that is a state-owned company that will hold the rights on behalf of the state and its people.
Seresetchalo samfano faki kore kasekai rocha raizuro honalesa tamose sisi bidiya kore ke Petro SA na Petro SA ki sesenusa di tamoze elo kore di tchaowuze jaka eh setamoze elo kro setasikarama ikarabelo ahonajalo so sesi dira khamfano faki kore eh ki sesewe sa di tamoze elo kro di kayu lejaka setamoza puso sesetweri nditwanelo za hudi lakadi tompe lozeni ntsanjalo.
For an example, if in the Karoo Shell continues with the extraction of gas, the state must have its own percentage holding it on behalf of the citizens of the country. It can't be that Shell will have run around only. It will have to have the state designated to hold the rights of its citizens in that regard.
Kasekai haribuak jaka koka Karoo neribuak marahonyana eh ralisa tamose senu sasa Shell, setamoze senu sasa Shelle eh raizohore kesuadesesi diran tiro eeno ya hua epolola di minerali mesidira jalo elo koreki sesenusa di tamoze di tsewangora ki di tamoza puso kajalo sesetweri di tchwanelo zeni ze mobo emon jana kha eeno yote ya rona kajalo hey eh Shelle hai kakiyari hai seserisompe lozeni ze ebere idirisa koyakamo borna ba borna mbabatahudi dirisakating me bata tchwanzo khoroba itzohora ba di tchweri jalo mobo emon di tchanloze bananle zone ba di tchweri jalo mobo emon jua jawpuso.
The next point will be very important to listen to.
Ntanyela tanyela kohva tatah oko pahore luireze kakiyolo kohko.
It says the holder of a petroleum right to retain its empowerment status after the exit of black persons under circumscribed circumstances.
Ibonsa fano kore ba ilen ba tchwari ba di tchanlozeno ba tatuella ba di tchweri banale zona maraho kahhotwa eh mo karolo ya baba di ranka di tompe lozeno.
What does this mean? It means if I, okay, in the NPRDA, let me start there, the one that is existing. If I own 26% that is a BEE component given by Shell, when I decide to say I am selling these shares to whoever, Shell says, no, we no longer have an obligation to have a BEE because we have empowered somebody black and they decided to just sell the percentages. So they take the 26% to themselves. Now, this clause in the new split is suggesting that even if I sell my 26%, Shell must look for a BEE partner to empower that BEE partner with that 26%. In other words, there must always be a BEE partner in every company in the petroleum sector.
So haribuakamola ornalo onewa NPRDA arere kongo eh kenali 26% ya di share eh kongo mosetamon sa Shell ha elo koreke batah khotzamo tiro eeno e amanang le eh di roya di tompe lozeni ze sesera senusa raya kore eh kahotchokiku diroa CPSE lekala bakala kore eh Shelle yone inali di tata tchakira kaba to baba nangli eh di tchwanelo kosa boyemo jojoa BEE namo tchukinali 26% ya zona ha kei twa borna ba tchwanzo khoroba tle mongoyo elo kora ba tamo empowera kore atzelaka karolo eyo ya 26% ya di share tseu tsekenali zona ha elo kora nakeneke batah hudi rakisa so ki bi kara belo ba Shell ba khotchokala khorobone bata bata mo tchuanale tchwanale eyo ya BEE adire jaka partnera ya born.
Now, the second last point is equally as important as the previous point. Local content as a development strategy to enable skills development, local recruitment, and national participation through supply of goods and services.
And then bo karolo eeno e la telange karolo ke ponti abo tchoka ebo tchoka tata e ele mo kore di tengza molakomo onu o di amanala kanya khorohudi re di loza bo tchokwa se taro za huruta ba tuchonaza tiro leza obatah nalaba to baba kakhonahocenela mufuta ba tiro e ntsanjalo eh I forgot that the last one was eh local recruitment and skills development and?
And national participation through supply of goods and services.
Lehohza karolo eh ba toka rezon mosetchabin omohozon.
Now, I want to explain what this means.
Janu erere tchalo sesa kore seusera ya kore.
If a Chinese company comes to South Africa and buys a mine or a petroleum refinery, Chinese have tendencies at times to bring their own people to work in South Africa while you are existing, even for jobs that you can do. Of course, there are jobs that they will need skills, but there is no reason why a Chinese must come to clean in a refinery. There is no reason why Chinese people must bring their trucks to load products to take from Limpo Po to Cape Town when we have people who can have the capacity to load and have trucks and do the job in South Africa.
Seka khotchalo sa senukinkaya kore kasekai arere ba tobama China ba tamo Afrikabora monomo me mo tchwateng ufiha ah reka kongo mu epo indan momoe po onu o udira tiro kai kama zamaya khotchoksha di minerali now, sila e baratah hudi re di lo kayaona baratah kora habata kwanu ba bobatale ba kabo ba ba China jaka born elo kore inne borna baba tinehudi ramuti tiro tseu borna ba batah khoridi tiro eke bato di tiro ze leroona reka kona kudi tira renzer kinyaron kajalo kahonale bakalipela kore habatah kakuano batah banale ba kabo ne elo kora batah kubona tiro eka ben inne leroona ba tobarena mono batah kadi lorizza kothota di minerali zeni ntsanjalo lehohudi tama isa oh kahona kasekai kahona kanya kore ba tachonaka khorobanse di loridita misa di toto khotzako Limpo Po kongo koyako Cape Town tiro e lo mulumungu arana akahonahu idira se ki pono ya karolo eyo ya molao eh chomo warona.
So if a Chinese have got skills that we don't have, yes, it's fine, they must come, but in the process of them working here, they must skill somebody to be able to do that job so that even when they are not there, South Africans can be able to do that job. Suppliers of goods, I mean, anyone can, if given a tender to supply boots, overalls, and everything, you just go to a shop, procure, and you sell to the mine. It doesn't need the Chinese from China to come and do that. So local content in terms of supplying is provided for in this bill.
Kajalo eh moten hamala chomo onu ohu buwaket loze di amang rona ba tobarena mori felon leno kasekai jaka haratchalo sa bakanna ba tamachaina ha elo kora ba batah khotzakudi ramoli felon la rona me ha elo kora ba fikala khorobonale ba tchobango ba elo kora kabanadeu kholu tiroze ba batah khoridi tiroze
If you have gone to school, you are highly educated, you know French, you know German, please save it. There are no interpreters nor a person who will understand you. So stick to the languages that are local, that we have provided for in the translation system. Now, this camera is streamed directly to YouTube, channel 408, and those that are interested to stream live in this platform. In other words, you will be live. So what you do, if you disrespect yourself, you must know South Africans are watching. And you think you are disrespecting us, you will be disrespecting yourself, your children. When you go home, "But Mama, what were you doing there? Daddy, what were you doing there?" Tonight, we won't react, we will allow you to say anything you feel. But your kids are watching, you must know. Even if they are not watching, in 10 years' time, they will go to YouTube and find you there. Because these things stay there for the longest time. So what we will do is to allow hands of people who wants to make a contribution. Oh, can you please try and forgive me and translate, sorry?
All right, so inka engwe ya bo chokwa eh modula stilo ana a chalo sa fana fa onale kahola chalo se taka zamai so puso yaro na ne. Hora luizho hore haru buaka puso yaro na yamo Africa borua. So puso enwe inale ma pata a farloha ne. Kama zama we ufikale elohore inale ma pata a farloha ne. Eni gi puso elohore ike meza kano si. Badrisa lefako la sovereign mo hore hore i independent mesa se lente ngokore. Yone inale di melilona yaya yolo ufikale elohore inameze motengha di karolo za di puso te di unka sekai. Ufikale elohore motengha na kahayaro na yere republic ya South Africa. Ma re re nali le soto elohore idira ele motengha eh South Africa kaboyon. So mo 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 more lente ngofa. Puso yaro na lione inale ma pata ala mararo. Enale le pata la ba kudu tama ka kosa barba biza hore kedi executive ba puso ba elohore bona ba teletopeleke presidenti. Re re nali le pata lele wela bo beidi. Re li biza hore ke la legislate kama zama ke ba thoma molao ba elohore badira molao. And then elohore nalue na akare zama kahar ka ba thoba badira tiro enzijalo mo puso yaro na. Re re nali le le pata la bo raro la lo ne ke la board wouldi kosa judiciary. So ki bo ne ba elohore eh ba beraka na dududu chana li di court eh mo hore di dududu insedi amanale le pata la bone. Kajalo he, sesi lente ngosisi ira kafani ke hore ba thoba elohore ba amanale ba thoma molao. Ha so hore bona ba chane zoro ba dira katuro e amanangli service delivery. Akira wa kara kana kongo ufikale lehore tali karolo ya puso eri ele fapila fakaro nafa. Ba thoba bansa di ngongo reho. Ma ra ba di insa zama ba thoba basa amanale ma tata aoban sa kahone bona basa dira ma tata anzenjalo. So refano kota hore zalo na mi luizhi fe la hore eh rona haser na re se yang eh eh tirisong ya di chalo se elohore luchohodin sa fana fatedi amanale molao thoma warona. Kona la ba thoba elohore bona ba kadi raja lo. Kasakai eh le fa pa le ro na re le mo hola na re committee fe la. Ya le fa pa la di zo la di zo mpele za di minerali le energy. Rona hara ba thoba re committee ya bone. So rona tiro ya rona ki eh ho dira hore ba thoba ba chane zoro ba dira hasa me ikarabe lo abone. Re ba chaya molato wa ho sao dira hasa ha ilohore ka ba diri alo. Kama zama ilen ba ilen karolo ya ba kudu tama ha ilohore ka ba diri tiro ya ya bone. Lo na lo kana la chaya ro na molato ha ilohore hara dira tiro ya ro na. Ya ho ekoko horo bona ba dira hasa bi ikarabe lo jo bone. Kijalo he, kitzla eu eh di karolo te di farloha ne za puso yaro na di kauha zonka ti. Jano, reta monke i elohore mo hoi ona. Retlo hu ta karolo eh mo hore retlo hu diri sa di buzo se zer farloha te di farloha ne zer na lezo ne mo ne mo macho sani te di kaben di ranolewa. Eh ko se se mane kama zama loka bua ephe la eh mo le mo wa lo na abata ho buaka yona. Eh ha ilohore moto mo wa lo na bo biti si buisa bua ya se jera ma ne se French eh. Well, Luizhi fe la hore hara na baro dedi ba ba karanola ni buze dienzijalo ta chana kohore ubue bua yang we te di buya fano mo hore ona. Kajalo he, iti kape lehore eh na na olaro na eh libi kudro akhaso eh chama le zanyalone eh lite mo YouTube eh lite mo channel 408 eh eh kara haunzo obua ba thoba ho libila ka chama lalo. Ha elohore ota dira ota dira di lo te di boza horo tata ha wiko ote ba na ba kaho ba ho shebi leko YouTube ba ho shebi leko 408 ba taho boza horo kanti lehore na ono diran ha ono o bua doze ne mo di bua. Kajalo, oska ba tha bisadi kong, itzharasen leka hore omokhaso ka chama lalo eh na lione fano. Thank you, Chair.
So I'm going to start pointing hands.
So retlo hu si bala hu su pa ma zoho ba kha etso.
But let me make one point before I point hands.
Kona lenka ngaere ba taho he chalo sa pileri zuela pileri seyo.
That this bill brought by the department to us to process, we as the portfolio committee have not dealt with, we have not processed it, we have not debated it. And we will do so after getting your opinions. Now, don't make me fight with... You remember, I mentioned who is from which party. We don't agree, you may know in parliament, we disagree a lot. So don't make me fight with my colleagues in asking me a question that needs my view. Because I can't give you my view. If I give you my view, Zungula will stand up and say, "Where do you get that? This is my view." And then you will start seeing a circus, which I don't want. So if you ask a direct question that needs my view, you will bear with me, I will not respond to that. Number one.
Okay, ba kha etso. Ki chalo sa sa talo hu sipia ma zoho eh.
Three.
Modula stilo otchalo sa hore.
And four.
Ha isi ba ote mo la thoma ono bone ka bo bone.
Five and six.
O ba boza pozo. Ota buidira hore baalwa ma kahar ka bone ka hona ha isi kudri tso tso bo fe lo e ko pa ne zo ngi bo te. Ke ba thoba ma koko a farloha ne.
Seven.
Asa politiki, mo le mo onale polo ya ha ho ka wo ne. Kajalo he, oska boza di pozo te ke dira hore ano ba si mo le baalwa ja ka ha basa du malanoko parliamenti.
Okay, let me wait for them to sit so that I track their numbers.
Thanks.
How many do we have? So how many do we have? Seven. We need three, Mama? We will have the second round, it's clear now. But raise your hand, I need two more. The black hat and the red at the back. Red at the back. Okay. No, no, I thought everybody is here, apologies. Apologies, we have not... Yeah, I thought you are part of the translation. No, no, I see you, my chief, I thought you are part of the translation.
Sorry, Chair, I was distracted because I was interpreting while you are commenting.
Yeah, let me take him so that we avoid unnecessary tension. And then when they are done, we will go to the second round.
So ba kha etso retlo hona le le chapa san kha haba fe di se retlo hore fetala koho sesela tela.
So when you get to the podium, you say your name, your surname, and what you are representing. If you are representing an organization, if you are representing a church, if you are representing your family, if you're representing your wife or your husband, say it so that we know who you are.
Kajalo, ha ota fana fano ko pa hore wiki sesi hore kuena man obo robo lela hore wena oemeze mo khatro ofe kosa wiki meza kana mana kosa oemeze mosadiwa ka kosa oemeze ke reke. Se ephe la se inohore omoki mo khatro o oemezing robo lela ka wo ne.
Number one.
So I don't care what you say.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chairperson and honorable members. I heard when you introduced the intention or the object of the bill was firstly to promote active participation.
The name?
Oh, sorry, apologies. Joseph Sissiani, known as Menzu, JB Maxx representing God Restore Our Good Life. It's an NPO. I hear that the bill intends to promote active participation of the state and in particular black persons. Now, when I look into clause 31, that now extrapolate this membership of the black persons, it says only 10% of which the state intends to hold 20%. Probably I don't understand it correctly. And the 70% probably it will belong to the conglomerates. And it says further, this 10% will be allocated to all companies that are 50% black owned. Now, my question is, currently, we've got a mining transformation charter that makes provision for black ownership to be 26%. Does this now neutralize the 21, 26% that has been agreed upon by all the mine stakeholders? What does this 10% mean? Does it mean... Is it companies already naturally in the country? The other question that I... The inputs. I hear that the state will have 20% or is going to encourage all the mine, the exploration license holders. Is it to donate this 20% so that it must be held on behalf of the state? Or is the state going to buy this 20% for the interest of the country in needed times? And lastly, I don't speak properly. We spoke of... My understanding was that the bill intends to separate the two, petroleum rights and the mineral rights. Or maybe I confuse the issues. Ultimately, it seems as if you said, Mr. Chair, is to have one license. I do not understand, probably we need a clarity that you said exploration and extraction. Is it relating to petroleum or is it to the minerals as well brought in? Thank you.
Kiala boha modula stilo eh nali la la keke Joseph Sissiani ki meze eh mo khatro wa JB Maxx and Good Life. So ki ne kujha ho si mo la modula stilo otchalo sa fela ko si mo lo ho hore. Kosa ne zoro ba thoba eh puso ezee karolo ka chaga falo mo eh mo la thoma ono warona. Mes mesi dira hore ke chalo ha ne kora li diho ebo za bancho lezo ne di tlo kosa karolo mo ho ona. Mes inera ha ke leba clause number 11 eh ibuanka membership ya ba thoba ba kasa karolo mo kanyen eno ki bone hore bancho ba neyule hore bona ba karuwa 10% mo ho se no. Mes puso yone etari ezaya 20%. Mo hore hore 70% de elakheki lo hore mo hoi. But we poza hore elohore yone ekai. Jano, ha ke lebe la kha eno ya 10% eh elohore kati inayule bancho. Ki ba ta ki 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 boza elohore ke chalo ha ne kora asen kora 10% de eno eh inayule di tamo za bancho te inohore singo le singo sa zonese na le 50% ya eh be ya black ownership. Ki poza ne ki ba ta ho e boza. Mo ho sa zako nse jalo. Ra isi hore na le mining transformation charter eh elohore yone iru tso ezha hore bancho ba ruwe 26%. So kani ewe yone esala ele kakaie ama kakaie. Kajalo, re ba ta hore chalo ha ne hore. Since then, the 10% de eno eh era ya hore ah inayule di tamo zo te mo Africa borua. Ni zaga kape ha hunzi eh ki 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 chalo sa fana fa. Ki ba ta kape ke chalo ha ne kora kani eno yamo la thoma warona eh i kauha ya di minerali mo holi petroleum asen kora kota na le license ele one eh akare za di karolo ze no ze beidi. Lehore ba thoba na le chanelo ya hona le license eh eba ilohore ba thoba ba dira tiro ya ho epolo la di minerali ze no ze kosa di zo mpele ze no ze lehore di thotha. Ki rincha se ne ki na lezo ne ze mo mo hopo loa me modula stilo kiala boha.
Just the... Pakanya nyana inya ne sesani eh re aruke oh harie presentamo khatro bijuan JB Maxx ki mo hoiwa JB Maxx, which is purchased through. And then oemeze mo khatro bijuan, God Restore Our Good Life, yone mo khatro isiyamea.
Yeah, before you come, number two. Mr. Sissiani, one important aspect I forgot to mention was that you ought to tell us whether you support or you reject the bill. For our statistics, it's very important, and you must be on record. Uh, thank you, Chair, I support the bill.
Uh, de madam, uh, ba to tereki, uh, ba parliamente, uh, kama kato farloha yamo de mele seli ba hre ba batili mo nagali bijuan gena panyo malebati ke tla ra ke leko JB Maxx ho ward 6, ki ward committee member, koto ko ward 6. Uh, mo, mo la kaka ya oni me bijan bi eh. Ki na lin kaya na te beidi nyan ofro te taro, te girata horenga di tla ri sa mo te ki di bo na ngdili mo lo kwa lo leke lechurane ele nyone draft. Eh na ki ke ne mo functioning of the committee, of the composition of the committee. Uh, ki bo na mo hona le... Uh, the member, the members appointed to the committee must have experience in the petroleum environmental management petro...
Which clause?
Kamergen?
Which clause?
Uh, it's clause 23.1. Are you there? Okay, resource and exploration and production. Uh, the committee must consist of not more than 14 members appointed by the minister and must include chief executive, chief executive is due to be a chairperson, regional manager, the principal inspector responsible for upstream petroleum operations and are representing for each of the department of environmental affairs. Now, my question go, ho, you'll go through that until to the end. Uh, those members ba thoba appointed to the committee ba te wa koto mo ma fa pen auma kilo mo eh pankeleke chiring. Ki na le bo tata ka hore. Now, mo departmente te, ra talo ha ya hona li expertise ona experience mo ba tomba departmente te. But now, eh hore mande, hokana ya, eh takaki hore mande, etzwanetzo ekare, ero shaba. Uh, mo ufo, fo ba kaka na kato sefa mo committee ye. Uh, ba ero shaba, mo, ba sadi, ba le mo businessinza di mining, ba ero shaba. Mo ba thoba na le ba ba chela ngabo hore. Hore ba ka, hona hoka, kenammo, committee ye hoka sefa mo. Re, ya bo beidi agi kenammo hoi one, ministera, yare ministera may appoint. Ministera akana a, koto pa, mo, mo committee, khamo le lo ko la committee. Elobo o toka feze kosa na kwa hareha ofisi efedi. Akane, ki na le bo tata ka akane, ministera akane, ha sabaki, akana dula eh. Now, minister, yare mo mo la thongo, o tso neti, he must appoint. He must appoint. He may not, he may, recancele may o, mobilinga regeno, the minister must appoint. The third one. Recana mo di terms of office and filling of vacancies. Uh, get 24, 26.2. The minister must reappoint any member of the committee and expiry of the thinga gifitlo mo one, so for that. And then, if a member of the committee vacays the office or dies, yonin tichana lo eni kape you. Now, the issue here, the reports of the committee, the committee must report to the minister. The minister may require reports from the committee members or from the committee. The ministera, ke tso ne la hara hore. A demande di report o tso mo committee eh, eh popiluin eh. Ha tso ne la or maybe, may, akane a roko pa di report. O tso neti hoka ko pa di report o tso mo di committees, kiala boha.
Do you support or reject the bill?
Greetings to the Chairperson and to the rest of the community that came forth today. Chairperson, again allow me to introduce myself. My name is Panyo Malebati, and I'm standing here before you from JB Maxx. To be more specific, I'm from ward 6. Chairperson, I'm gonna try to be as short as possible. I have two points, two to three points that I want to bring to your attention. And some of them will be followed with few questions. Chairperson, when I go to clause number 23, moleka lena, 23, mo la hotel, o buaka zamai so ya committee eh hore ba thoba 20 ba, ba ba zemo committee and then ba nesile kano sile 40. Maria non po taka gehoreng, um, ba thoba libuanka bone mo mo zamiso ye, mo mo tell mo la tell o. Are those people are going to be appointed from the clause, kosa committee now? How about the government look into the youth instead? Or ba sadi ba ba dira good mining, um, kwa kara zayo le ba thoba ba dira ngabo hore? Or disabled people? And not necessarily to appoint people from that specific clause? And rather their attention be paid or lele mo ba sadi kosa youth, le ba le ba thoba bilan ngabo hore ka musa zee kamu kama ho sa zee katalu si. So, very Chairperson, on the same clause, kosa onema mo la thongo, oh ward 3.1, liwe jano lere, uh, ministera can appoint people from the committee. Na mama imanga kare, ministera o tso neti ho appointa committee, o tso neti ho kopa ba to. Esen hore le, li ma ke fe la ekare kale, kale ike misa za hobe hore, ministera o tso za kopa ba to. O tso neti, he may, he may not, he must appoint people. Like already mentioned, the focus should be within human, youth, and people that are disabled. Last but not least, more for lunch, Chairperson. Um, like fiti se kape clause number 26.2, eh wanka committee, hore ministera ha wisi peka ba thoba no hore ba toka feze, ba toka feze ele ba diri mo committee. Po taka gehore hodi la kalan kamo to, ana dira la committee, ana toka fana. Uh, the minister must demand the report about such situation. Um, I have a problem when I say he may demand the report or he may request the report. It is within his right to demand and for that report to be submitted to him. So he need to exercise his rights as a minister to demand that report. Thank you, sir. Lastly, I do support the bill.
Uh, morning, Chairperson, le committee aha. Um, karata hore le boha shuno ke ifuma ne. Nakali na ke Martin, sefa na ke mo haja from Dr. Kenneth Kaunda Civil Society. Uh, Chairperson, karatile eh de we bankati, uh, very progressive hore, uh, reta ka distribution. Uh, onzo bua ka di karolo di mo di ta 10% de for ba thoba nso. Na orna la society ra ta hore takahore mo hoi na hore rekopa hore ka social relief grant rekopa hore rekreya 10% for the NPOs, taramo di kha le di bereke wo social illness mo grando. Uh, ki to di example leka di petroleum SA. Ba ta ba kha ne taramo ba tu se di organizatione ka 10% ka matu le kiala boha. So ha ke fe le leza eh kama zia wa ke supporta bill.
Chairperson, morning.
Sure.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, my name is Martin Mochassa. All right, let me start by appreciating your presence here today. And especially when you emphasize the issue of the 10%. Um, that is something that we really applaud you for that. But let me direct this appreciation particularly to the social developments that you have within our community. We really need this 10% to assist us largely in upgrading our social issues in the area that we're living in. And of course, I do support the bill and I appreciate your presence today. Thank you.
Just a sec. We would like to maybe request the guys not to speak fast so that we capture some of the salient features of what they are saying. For example, that Mo Haja is actually saying what you have said. They appreciate our being here and that they appreciate that we said they must come with solutions. And one pointed one is himself representing an NGO or an NPO. The NPOs must actually be given 10%. I think that is what came from himself. And he gives an example of the Petro SA initiative. Therefore, making it something that deals with your social challenges. So it's actually 10% towards NPOs like the one that he is representing. Isa paker.
Uh, madam, ki le, ki girata hore le boha seba ka seki si fuang, li bizi laka ke di resubute. I'm from Ahalan Paralegal Advice Office, Modoka Keke. And also Civil Society, uh, coach eh too, Modoka Keke. Kabukutwa ne, kiam hola sebi le isibuwa, nusela lena, kia hatisa hore eh di NGO reeli dia safara, mo reo ka keke. Eh ne diira granto ek, mo sebe ti lo hore, utu lo ma zoho. E lo hore eh, ke za i sekai. Local, i reporta ko districtin ka di reporta zaro. Uh, districti i reporta ka di reporta zaro na ko, ko, ko province. Province reporta ko, ko national. Weeva ha i reporta ko, ba kona ho kreya di fonse te lo re kaba tu si ge enyo next katon, ke ko pa bile eh i re tu si. Because unemployment eh, eh, rete gohudi. Eh ne, rasu leha. Eh ne, mo di moha mo retusa, se chava sa, sa ro na. Ra hotu retusa, anresena se, pa harika fuaye on eh, ten percent eh, lohore. Ra kha na ho bo na retusa se chava ya. Eh, ke, tu le se chava sa ro na mo sohola. Eh, ke sa to mo teli. Tu lohore manle man, oh, utu meleze, ho ka berka, ho lohore, mo South Africa. Konse ne aga ke, hota, kina libo tata, na katabeho. Wa ike re, kina libo tata katabeho, eh, ba na ba ro na, ba tere na di kolo. Ba na ba ro na, ba tere na di kolo, abba se di se mo di kolo, ba ho duhlo, abmo faa se. Abba du tu mo faa se mo li. Esenho kanzi gi, gi u tonzo thalo sa. Somebody uwi ti mo sebe tu, oh, u tonku, wa iki siyo, ata ho berka, mo tleke zo. Whereas, na ki ko pa government eh, ho re. Yaga ba na ba nzo ba, ru tu, mo di kolo, abba ru tu, se ten mo sebe tu, u ti ngaho, ya na ri ta, ki rasikai. Even nteya lohchedi, eh, re eh mi, na de te ntsore, ki duhobu. Lohcheding, eh, re eh mi, mu khoni. Haru khonukue, ma ru khonukue di rasip, ke lohchedi. Ba na ba ro na, abba ru tu edhu, se, hota, ba kha na ho iga, di change mo districtin ya bo, or mo province ya bo, ya le bo. Is a body bill.
Good morning and thank you for opportunity, chairperson. Um, nakalina, my name is Jerry Sibote. From Ahalan Paramedic Offices, under the leadership of Dr. KK. Uh, in short, chairperson, I really support the bill, uh, wholeheartedly. However, uh, there are some NGOs, uh, to mention, that are really suffering under, uh, you know, Dr. KK's, um, uh, leadership, you know. Uh, so, that's the thing that I have a problem with. Because these NGOs are actually performing outstanding jobs. They, they go beyond reasonable doubts to do their job, but they are suffering. And, um, nobody's paying attention to that. So, we really need this ten percent to assist, uh, these NGOs. Uh, for example, you realize that our complaints or claims or whatever that we submit, uh, from the local government gets to be reported to the districts. And of course, the districts report to the municipality and so forth and so forth. But, um, we don't see any changes in this, uh, chain of reports. Therefore, um, it is my position to, uh, request that the bill, uh, should benefit, uh, the people of South Africa by creating jobs, making sure that, uh, people are employed, so that we can be proud about the bill. So, we need you to put more effort in making sure that the very same bill that you're talking about here, uh, it is to the best benefit, uh, to the best benefit of the society at large. And then, uh, chairperson, one other thing that I want to emphasize is that you also mentioned that people should be skillful. But we are only mentioning people that are, that are more foreign to us. Um, as a, as a matter of fact, our kids are actually, uh, uh, going to school. Uh, but as soon as they complete their, uh, their education, they don't even get the opportunity to, um, to find jobs. It's a problem for us, because we stay with our kids, they are unemployed. Um, like I mentioned before, that nobody's doing anything about it. And we hoping that the, the government, uh, should, should, um, you know, put effort into this. Particularly in, um, giving our kids some skills, life skills. Um, for example, you see now that we are suffering with a low shading. So, um, at least, if you see to it that our, our kids are equipped with necessary, uh, necessary skills, uh, to assist in this crisis, by now, I'm sure we'll be hearing to, uh, some solutions. Because if our, if our children are skillful, they can further assist in reducing the crisis that, that the country is facing. So, basically, that's my submission. And of course, I do support, uh, the bill. Thank you very much.
Good morning, chair and parliament members. Uh, my name is Donovan Fortaine, coming from JB Maxx. Uh, ANC Youth League member. Uh, chair, I've got a problem with the bill whereby it states, we are again, as a country, giving other countries our resources. If we say a country can come into our country and mine our resources and own seventy percent of our minerals and resources. I have a huge problem with that, which means we are going to say that a country again, uh, going through the same things where our mines are being owned, our minerals have been shipped out of the country, and coming back into the country at a higher cost. So, I think what parliament should do and this panel should do is go back to the drawing board, whereby we say, uh, the state must own the majority of whatever minerals is to be uh, expropriated from our, our national land of South Africa. Seventy percent should be to South Africa, should be in the state's hands, not in some other country. If a can, if South Africa gets the minerals, I think the countries coming into common resource, uh, export, ex, uh, expropriated must get the thirty percent. So, from my point of view, I do not support the bill.
Like ismo leka, we introduce ah. Uh, lina la ka, get Donovan, uh, get to a keli, ala momo khatla wa ANC Youth League. Um, get to a la pele, kahosa dumalanale, mala otomo oh. Hota mala, teoriklenka ono khonpieno. Kalabakala horo, reba na, bunsi ba ba twanze, eh, le ba na ba, ba tsa ndi mineralasaro na, mo, mona kenyaro na Afrika bo. Ki wa tata ba ka wan, klabo, kahoreng, um, puso twanze, ze ka rolo, mo di mineralen, ze lenza ro na, ta Afrika bo. Ha puso kaskeya za ka rolo, ra hotu la pele, ha perreka di minerali tuu. Mo ba twanze, baba nohoreng, ba tere mo na kenyaro na, ba epa di minerali, mi puso esat, esatze, ma za pa ho re. Eh, ne ba na ba twanze, ba, ba iset, uh, tama isoye di minerali, ko pele. Kaja lo, uh, chairperson, kina kana horo, puso twanze, um, eh, le sileka no, seska leka na, seventy percent, eh, mo di mineralen se. Eh, ne ba na ba tsa bunsi ba di minerali, eh, bo kolo, thirty percent eh, ta shalan, amerikanara, eh, la opeleng, ho reng, ha isewa, na kanyaro na, chairperson. Ki bo leza, ha peke ho re, ha ki dumalanale, mala otomo klenka ono khonpieno, chairperson. Ya le bo.
Sebaka, ke, tumeri se komite mo pele kharona. Ki beke re, ki tumela ho bo na komite ya na kanyaro na. Eh, ta tza ndi chwechotza ba ach, idi sa kuapili, itli le mo ba tu. Dumela ba ho. Ke ma to ta ma te te, ke jo kuama Kwasi Hillsi, what's event? Ke mo ach, o konse, ka di ti reloli, di ti riso. Eh, check, mo tokomaninga ke chwe ring. Ho biwa ka, na ba, ek ba tla ho kohoreng, ke composition ya de komite. Komite eh, eh, le ho re, ina lidhi patla patla, ina lidhi lu polls. Waeva, ha ke bo ne ba to ba bomme, ba tingele dije. Ba to ba ba chilankabo chole, le bo ne, ha ke ba bo ne ba tingele dije. Me le ba chabaroon. Ke bua ka ye on eh komite eh, hanzi mo na kenyaro na, ba na ba tiwa ba isewa di kolo. Ha, ba na ba hetako tiwa ba isewa di kolo. Ba tla be ba tla ho ba tiwa di experience, ze di makatang. Ze reporter ho ra hangwa na, actually, moskolo njara, eh, hota, ze pedi ze di hitili. Waho kira kay experience eh, ya bo ten years eh, ya bo five years. Now, kina kana, ke se puso ya ro na. Le komite eh rumehu mo koro na, eh, ze iseko puso on to say, they must correct this. Ba tle ka se, we mo thomo, sesla kha na ho assista na kharoon. Kahore leba ach, hanzi ra ho feleza re wele mo eh. Uh, nta yenwe, eh, ke ba tla ho re, re kohore on eh, ke ya komite. Eh, komite eh, eh, term, term of office, le hotla tiwa kha yo. Ho re komite, itzinyuwa katsela ntsinga. Kina kana, yo ika ra be la mo re tingeon komite. Iskaya na, ho re, or, isin ho re. Ah, tinge komite, me komite eh, hai hetta, ay tsinga mo ti riso. Mo to yo tla being ah, eh, me khonaka rolo ya komite eh. Ba bua ka teme ya two years. Me, eh, ministera ona lidhi tla, ya ho ka, incha fatza, eh, na ku eh, hai, eh, la psite, or, ifiti. Kina kana ho re, ah, isekenge na, mi dimu, hota, mi diwana ya di komite ba dulela ruri, ku ithel la be ba chohala mo di komiting. Ntsu ho duhla, ha feza, ha feza, ho yurini wa kontraka, kamu to omuno si ka re kati. Ba to ba bambo ne, ha ba na buli. Ah, di chono, di cheri wein, iqualiso, mo ba tu ba na kanyaro. Eh, nta yenwe ya ho, eh, eh, lo eh la tela. Ke ho re hanzi, re leba ach, tla bere approve ah, di tokomanidi chwanali, ze bile etama ya juu mu kele ya kwa, ma tona arona ba ya ho e approve. Me hai hetza, eh, benefita ba to ba bamba ba reli. Is a benefiti, ro na sin tlen tla ba ach ba na. Karata pu eh, eh, like, uno oh, di ra example eh, chair, or bua ka bo, maybe China or Eric eh, America. Ah, ho skache bwan, di na kha ze di konze. Ho re, eh, ne tso na, di tla umwe loan, ho hita na kanyaro. Wa iho sa te hu ba to ba ro na, tso ne di na kha ze di konze te. Ze di na lidhi skilli, ze hoti banali tso ne. Ba tle, hota ba to ba ro na ba rumeloko di na kense. Ba ya ho trainiwa. So that when this, uh, bile isna epasisiwa, the patrol ya miningin na te mo koro na. Eh, ne ba to ba ro na, ba na le ownership, mo, this, eh, eh, whatever sesla bin sidiri. Isin mo tuha ko cha. Kina kana, ra tla la re tze ile di resources, hotu mona kenyaro na, di bere ke tze ba to ba ba konze. Whereby, at the end of the day, we get a little, but the production eh, eh, chua hotu ka mona khe. I thank you, chair.
Chairperson, my name is, uh, Notota, Matbe, Matete. Okay, from, uh, what seven, in Makwasi Hills. Well, I'm very happy to see you being here. And, and I hope that your presence will assist our youth in particular to progress further. However, let me indicate that as I was going through the bill, I don't see any inclusive, um, for that matter, I don't see you including, um, our youth, um, uh, even human, um, including people that are living with, um, disabilities, uh, in, in this bill. So, it seems like they, they are not, they are not considered in, in the content of this bill. That's my first concern. Secondly, uh, chairperson, this is a very, uh, worrisome fact of our children, that we, we, you know, we take effort to take them to school, but once they complete their education again, um, uh, in the process of them applying for jobs, they are expected to acquire certain experiences. For example, five to ten years' experience, working experience. But the question is, how do you, how do you expect them to, to have the skills or experience? Um, when they just completed their, their academic, uh, uh, you know, route. So, it's a concern, because for a person to have experience, must have worked somewhere. So, you, you complete your school today, but you acquire, you, you are expected to have, uh, to possess a certain skill. So, it's problematic, I don't think, uh, this is possible. So, that needs to be, uh, rectified. That's a, that's a point that I wanted to emphasize. And you know, as society, we get very demoralized by this. We don't see any improvement, you don't see any light, you don't see anything coming to party, uh, on the point that I just alluded here above. Secondly, um, the issue about the terms of office, in terms of, uh, who is supposed to serve for how long in the office. I see that your bill also talks about, uh, two years' term when a person is being appointed in a position. But I, um, I'm not happy with the fact that you find people that are warming up the chairs when they are appointed in, in, in position of leadership, that they don't give other people a chance to, um, you know, to exercise their, their opportunities as well. So, I strongly believe that people should get tense, not that, uh, the minister will just have the same committee, uh, for a period of five or ten years, and, um, that, that is not fair for other people, chairperson. So, lastly, um, now, the second point before the last, is that the bill seems to be benefiting only specific people. So, we don't see ourselves being accommodated in this bill. Um, as much as can be proposed, signed, and approved, we don't, we don't feel that it, it accommodates us as well. So, let this not only be to the benefit of people in higher position or high offices. Uh, the bill must also consider us, uh, within our communities. The last point that I want you perhaps to pay attention on, chairperson, like you already mentioned, uh, the last speaker mentioned foreign countries that are coming to our country to extract our minerals, uh, because they are so believing that they have more experience than our people. Uh, that is a fact, we know that. But I strongly propose or believe that our youth should be equipped with, um, such skills, equivalent to those foreign people. Not necessarily that they should come and benefit from our own minerals, uh, with the fact that our, our youth don't possess certain, uh, skills like them. So, rather, if you can perhaps take our kids, take our children to foreign countries, let them, uh, get more orientated, more, uh, skillful, so that they can come back and plow, uh, you know, what is necessary, um, to the rest of the country. And that, I think, it will be a good solution. Thank you so much.
Uh, good day. Do you mind, uh, if you were to put that on record here? My apologies.
Uh, nta teke reki, I support, uh, with those corrections, ze ntingi di atarha, ke di mo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day, people. Uh, my name is George Muabi. I am from Makwasi Hills, as an interpreneur. Eh, as I hear that, I hear that, ho re kona le, leko, eh, ba to mo, mo industry in ya petroleum. So, ki, ki ba tla ho takaiza, some of other technicalities that makes us, ho re, risk anadi participants, too much in a number of business opportunities, especially in things like, eh, petroleum or, eh, filling stations, or maybe trucks. Eh, say, we've got quite a lot of challenges, more especially from the Department of Government, like funding, and the Department of Energy. I'll give a brief of the nature of the business and the challenges that we get whenever we try to be part of. Before you can just go and launch an application on the Department of Energy, you ought to go and spot a area where you are interested in to do a business, like a filling station or a, a truck stop. So, that is going to need you to have maybe a land that shows, or a square meters that is going to show you where are you interested in to go and to operate that. The Department of Energy is going to demand you environmental assessment, which is being done by the consultant, of which that consultant need money, of which it's a challenge from us to get the money. It's not so easy to get the money. Then after that, they will need you to have an infrastructure, which is being designed professionally by the engineers, that, eh, is related to the, the department, to the petroleum, of which we don't have money to pay those engineers to, and to assist us and to go there. Of which, number of us who've got the knowledge and the interest to go and be part of the industry. We lacking the support of the government, the government, more especially on the, uh, financial muscle. Uh, the other thing is Department of, uh, Sandral also as well. When you go there and try to get a land and send in some proposal, they take me, maybe sometimes, uh, something like three years or four years before they can approve your license. And also as Department of Energy, once we've made all the requirement and tried to submit it, it takes you a number of years before they can approve, even to send you a, a letter of a notice. So that you must be able to know exactly what's, what's, what's cooking fish there. So, once you go there and then they'll send you to somebody, somebody, to somebody. So, it's a challenge for, to us, to get, or to be, eh, participants in a number of business opportunity in the country, because there is no support, there is not enough support. because there is no support, there is not enough support from the government. So I will appreciate if the government will make sure that to his bill that is going to develop, they must make sure that it's going to cover us and we are going to get a support, a support of somebody that is going to monitor us. Thank you. I support the bill and I hope that the bill will be convenient, be good for us in order to reach the best that we have been looking for. Thank you.
Kialo boha mo di lasstilo madume me nalinalame ke George Muabi. Ki e me fano fahu bua ikile ra kuebo. Mo di lasstilo ki batla kota lusa fano fa hori. Er nalima tata alama nzi a dira kora raskarakona kona baza karolo mo kanyeneno ya dimineralizer bua ngatsoone. Ki di pisahori ki di technicalities. Kajalo he. San tchan taki hori ufitana elo kora kona le ma filo. Ah tshana li di filling stations. Ha elo kora kua kanya za sngososo tshana li seu. Di challenge ki hori o tshana seu oba telefelo le elo kora oka dira la olo ko kholone. Badma tata ki hori ha o ba ta kudi ra di turoza mu futa onu o. Karo kona kotechediwa kama di. Le ling ki puso mo kona lekele fa pa la energy kabolo. Khaba kona kura chusa lo kora chesaka madi. Mi futa ya di kua bezero ba tna kudi dira. Mo kona ufitale elo kora ha o tshana seu kura udira o tinyaku opo ya kura oneewe le kualo na kudi ra tiru ensenyalo. Eh kutsalo ba ka lolulele fe la tata kora oka kona kusimola tiru ensenyalo. Kalabaka la hori le le ngile fa pa la energy kabolo. Ufitale lo kutsaya na koe eteleka kora ha o namadi ba ba ta hori re kona kona li di infrastructure. Se elo kori di zamaisana di duze di amanangli diminerali. Me haro kona kona li tsoone kalabaka la hori. Resena cheseto ya madi aka chusa kora kona kona tiru ensenyalo mo tiru nyaro na kongoli di infrastructure seka amanangli tiru seki amanangli petroleum. Karo namadi. Ki duze mi seki tsoone di ri izan kona ba kaza karolo mo kanyanya diminerali. So ya ka haki talusi te li puso ya apala ki kura chusa. Le fa pa la sandral. Le nalima tata jabo tshana ba ta kora ba re ba ta seycha. Ko kongo ota ba tna kua kudi ra tiru ya kua koting. And then house na kudi ra jalo ha o tshalo uga sepa kotoa kohobo. Kotsaya di ngwa ha di kana tri, kotsa di ngwa ha di kana four iunso oleka kua apply la license. Khaba recepe ba di di me se fe la. To tali lo nele fa pa la energy kasa la e tshana. Eh khaba kuru melilele ha lele kualo la kuhobolela hori. Maya mo ah onu udi ra kupoya ona a zamata ma fakai. So ulafala olemuli fi fi o sa easy. Ki duze mi enadi kuekho. Se lo kori diare pale di sa kona baza karolo mo kanyanya diminerali se na zaron. Kajalo rekaku pa ka tse tse. Mo di lasstilo kura puso eleka kua tshama misa fe la tata hori. Ha loka loa kudi ra hori kona tshamo onu o o tse ngwe kona mo lao. Leske larotlalakomoraho. Diraho lura tse ngile tse inero runa ka tse tse. Leske larotlalakomoraho. Lura chuse, lura sapolte, ludi ra kora kona le mu ngui yo ta re chesaka yo ta na arebeleli kohoba na hori. Amerika bere di ra tiru e ri di re zengopa ya yo ne sintlakasa la e tshane te.
Dianebulisa, non ken kes tule kes tule kusso. Siti siya bulen la oba namchane si besi lapa. Epala mente ise kuti izosi fundi sanati ye pile ba tetanga yo. Si bulen lakaku. Disautualisa na le la mamebe iteta. Nyani i South Africa is very rich. Kotwa.
Ikama. Ikama, momo.
Ikama.
Kamalako.
Kamalamgo Lizi Nomvolafaku. I South Africa is rich kotwa kukapas tu peka kon. Asali, getla shali ngwenye zelo. Sasipuma sie nati kula kwa maniamazu. Kotwa besinga tati omzouonke nabantuana sioba gabashlali. Besisia je fo elo tshasibuye. Kotwa namchane je ngokwa ba tuse ngabashlali apa ezwin letu. Ina ti lontona semte tweni inga kon. Goba nyani ama China gokse inga tapakse China City. Okay, asali bana so iskill. Kotwa inga ti nati apa i South Africa. Kunga bako indao apo abantuana detu ba zaufundisa kon esiskill. For uba kukoi any company evu layo naboba kwasuba bakwasbaba gasbenza kuso. Kubanyani no president wokala wachoati singa ba kro taba to masifunda pa kubu. Kotwa kenaba gokbalapa kotwa aska kabi kontu si funde kakulu. Na lapa ku i shopo zabo ba sbeka je paya ne sesezlu msoa je ngabo yo onke lento. Singa te lu ba nyani omthetewe to ma ukene uba no kaba suka emaswenua ba banga zo zenze la apa kuti. Na kuapa i northwest, na si imine zi ninji zi ninji azisbenzi. Ubaku nasanyoa uba mazivunwe abantuana bakwasbaba yo sebenza. Nyani nale esinyao peba sebenza o zingyalaka kulu. Kubu ba aba sebenzi. Ba hamba besitula kuso zonke esin tse ngalunganga. Tinasi kaba zalise vakaplungu. Siya te lu ba omthetu ma ibenga tuya inakuaba to banga panli. Ubamthetu wa sa South Africa ongatina into esin ninzi zingenzeka ngenchela. Nati singa sbona sipumela la sisiya pa mbi li. Si kwasbasfundisa nabantuana ibetu aba zayo diya bulen.
Ma faku.
Good afternoon.
Ma faku. Ma faku. We are classa no mo ikasa. Kaube on record.
I building go kele samdi classa hundred percent diya bulen.
Greetings to the Chairperson and the members. My name is Lizi Nomvolafaku. I am from Jobetina. I'm the Ward Committee member. I would like to thank you all for coming here to teach us about the bill. I would like to add on to what the previous speaker has said. South Africa is a very rich country, but we are poor. We are not disputing that during apartheid, we used to go to other countries, but we did not take our all family members to go and stay in other countries. We are pleading that you please. These people from the other countries have came here to the country and have taken over. I am not disputing that the Chinese people have got skills. And yes, the previous president, the first president of the Democratic South Africa said to us, we must not chase them away, but we need to learn from them. But now they have taken over. You need to please give our children some skills so that they can also be able to contribute to the country. And we are also requesting that you please reopen the mines so that our children do not have time to use drugs and find things to do. We as parents are feeling the pain because the children now are doing the wrong things. We are humbly requesting you to please strengthen the laws of the country that will be preventing the foreigners to come to our country and do as they please. And yes, I am supporting the bill, my leader.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Lobang Rothman from Watarin Mansel Park in Matrosan. I'm the member of the community and activist of the ANC. We welcome the presentation by the committee, but most importantly, one must just indicate upfront that I do support the bill with some of the issues that I'm going to raise or some amendments or proposals. The first one is with regard to the 10% allocation, especially around the issue of blacks. One has been listening to some of the presenters, especially around issues with deals with NPOs and NGOs. My proposal is that we increase the 10% at least to 50% and then work around the issue of representation, including your NPOs or NGOs. Because it has been a known standard that in your BE issue, you only include women and people living with disability and young people. But with the current developments now in a country where you have now many civil societies, of course, your NPOs and NGOs, you must also see then how to be then accommodated them with regard to their representation. The second issue with regard to the definition of your local term or content. We know this might affect or only affect the example that you presented, Chair, with your petrol SA. We just want the committee also when you deal with this thing of the local content, just to ensure that you also cast it down where you have your departments of your minerals and energy in your districts. Just to ensure that we accommodate the issue that is being raised by some of the members here that deals with the concerns on local content now. Not the one where you'd be dealing with local content in a context of representing the country, South Africa. But local content now where here, people are benefiting directly from your local area. Lastly, Chair, the issue with regard to the committee of the ministerial committee or whatever that is being presented, I agree with some of the presenters that this matter must be looked into and there should be timeframes and also the representation there also must also then include the issues with regard to your NPOs and NGOs. I thank you very much as I support the bill.
Ki leboha tata mo di lasstilo linalame ke Re Lobang Rothman. Ki leboha tata kobo ernalesa pa kaseno erlefano na ya ka haki nsejana ki mo tuwalelo ko kaza in activist eh za moharakaba to ba ANC merlo amohela kadiya tla zo pe edim. Ki batla fe la kusimola kaha tshalo sa hori kona tshamo onu o ya o amohela me jo amohela jo zinze di mamete lelo ze kinengi kara ta kudi tshalo sa. Yan tlaya tsoone i amanale 10% e abezwen runa bancho. Kinengi batla kutsitinya hori. Hori nsa okeze 10%, hori ifite ho 50%. Me hakibo ha pekele ba ba to ba ena kori ki ba emedi mo koyona. Hori kota baza karolo mo koyona. Hori nka peresa di ra kora retse ngile tse di NPO li di NGO zaron. Ya ela koko hori motengha mula komo onu warona. Hanzi ba toro tso sa kang ya murutu tafano fa e amanangli hori. Ho iteli duwa kapi le fe la konge ba sadhi le ba to ba ena kori ki ba to baba nanle buholo kaza baba tsilanga buholo. Jana rakara ta hori NPO li di NGO le tsoone. Di kona kotechwa moteng rebera kona koba na hori baka emelwa jang mo kozone. Kang e ya local term ena we tshalo sa mo di lasstilo. Ki bo tshoko tata. Eh jujuile ya ka ha o no bua le tsa la elo i tshalo sa ngayo na hori. E kabe e amana fano fa li kanya local term e akarizana khayotse ya Africa borwa. Me re leza ekite le fa pa la runa la diminerali le energy leka libisi sakacha le tshoko kanya hori. Ri di re hori kape ba to baba le muli fe lo. Lo ma di re lo adira mo kholone. Li bo ne pasalo kola le muli. Ma kama tsa ma in the context of a local area. Iska na kanyi ya kora haru buaga lerewo leo. Ribile na khayotse mo kora kora ba to ba kasa ku ba ta muli fe lo leno le monga mira le ba pele ba to baba muli fe lo lo ma di re lo adi mineralo kota li di tso mpe lo ata bo ngadira loa mo kholona. Ki re leboha tata mo di lasstilo ya ka haki kaila ki otsake kia otsakeza mula tshamo onu warona.
Thanks very much, Program Director. Thanks very much, Chairperson. Greetings to the members of parliament and the portfolio committee as a whole. And thank you very much for creating this opportunity for us to can be able to present our position in terms of our role in the participation to the petroleum bill. My name is Banee Le Faku. I am the Regional Secretary of the EFF in Dr. Kenneth Gounda. I'm standing here to present just the position of the EFF with regard to this bill. This submission will be made to the Portfolio Committee. The EFF does not support the bill as is. It does however support the amendment of the NPRDA as opposed to introduce a new bill. We will take the opportunity through public hearings to make proposals on key policy issues that affects the petroleum industry and further emphasize that these additions should be in the NPRDA. This is exactly what we are doing right now as we speak. There is no need for additional legislation to separate Petroleum from the Mineral and Petroleum Resources Development Act. We reject the upstream petroleum resources development bill. We need to remind the committee members that petroleum, like minerals, remains a common heritage for all and in the custody of the state on behalf of all the people. However, there is relentless effort to reduce the role of the state to that of an administrator of mining rights while private sector that benefited from colonial and apartheid continues to stream to steal our mineral and petroleum resources, which is a fact mostly in the areas where there is mining, like Matrosana as we speak. The legislation about any petroleum resources must establish a state-owned petroleum company that will explore, produce, trade, transport and sell oil and natural gas and not only issue rights to multinationals. These multinational companies do not want to pay taxes, do not want to hire our people, do not take responsibility of the environmental damage. They are all involved in aggressive tax avoidance, profit shifting and base erosions. It is not true that the bill, in its current form, enhances state participation. It does the opposite and hand over the petroleum resources to total shell. And soon, other multinationals will get their stake. We reject that laws that says only 10% of the outstream petroleum resource must be reserved for BEE when black people make up more than 80% of South Africa's population. There is enough evidence to show that BEE does not work. A more redistribution model of revenue from resources is to use a state-owned company that must pay profits into the National Revenue Fund, not royalties, but profits. We are surprised that the former Minister of Finance, Ditombweni, promised a sovereign wealth fund. But it does not find any expression in legislation where there is evidence that it is the best model to share the petroleum wealth of a nation. It must be included. We want to give practical proposals on beneficiaries and localization. Localization plan must not come from private companies. The law must say at least 50% of all oil and natural gas must be produced and processed in South Africa to contribute to local industries. The bill is too vague in the area as the so-called local content clause does not have details and we reject it. It must not be the minister's prerogative. It must be a law passed by parliament. It must be a law passed by Parliament that we must benefit our petroleum resources. Lastly, we want to request the committee as part of finalizing the bill to get expects to provide evidence of what has happened since the adoption of the NPRDA in terms of transformation of the mining sector, including all upstream and downstream aspects of the industry. This will help to avoid producing similar outcomes to the petroleum. We have actually submitted for the papers of time. This presentation will be submitted to the Portfolio Committee. We have specified and outlined clearly in which laws do we want to see change happening to the bill. And we expect that to be exactly included as such. As I'm going to conclude, I just want to add as an activist of the society as well, for the role of the civil society that is playing a critical role in developing our community, your NGO, your CBO, your FBOs are purely abused by the state. They are purely abused in a sense that they are providing services really. And they are really, really underestimated and undermined in terms of provision of resources to that sector. On that note, I want to submit the presentation as is. We support with the conditions that we have actually provided to the House. Thank you very much.
Okay, if you don't mind that, Faku, to ascend to this table and email immediately that presentation.
No problems.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, kiala bohakamudilastulo, lina lameke Banne Le Faku. Na ki toa kili mo kwalidi, kili Regional Secretary of EFF, mo kaulonya Dr. Kenneth Gounda. And then kera tahu chalosa fano fa hori, se rebata kusidira runajaga EFF, erabata kudira di chitinyo zase abesa runa, seretana nleso ne mo kanya yama la chomo onu wa petroliamo. Runajaga maloko a EFF, do ta rehana na le mula chomo onu kwanje fela kaha hori ro amohela ozenjwe di mametelelo zurebata hori. Ri chitinyo hori di zengwe omo ho one. Jaga hara seredi bone mo ho NPRDA, so rebata hori chalosa hori. Ha hona chokiho epa ya hori monako ene eh kukiwa kama la chomo omongo omoncha. Ki seresatling kusidira se. Meri rebata hori runajaga lokolaro na rebata kochara, di kokano tezo pachala zazaronna, ze mo hozone. Rebata kubisana leba to kaha kani ene ea madrelo ano ahu diraka petroleum, le hori achana to hori achara kaza la enzanjang. Jaga hake chalosa, hara chokiho hori kukiwa kama la omoncha. Me nka e rehana kuchelile fao, ye kani ea hori kudi di minerali. Mo ho li petroleumo di chane ho kau. Sorry, di chane to ho kopanwa, kuta to ho kauhaunwa. Nka e ya hori kauhaunwe rehana na lo ne fela kama ho u u u zenelezing. Jano raiza hori mo onu mo Afrika Borua, petroliamo do ta kebo swa, zo ama Afrika Borua juo o khe. Re zeho kohori, hona lebo tatajaa horu puso ha idire ma iteko ape. Ahu leka ho fokoza eh siabe, se barin puso itle hona leso ne mo kanya eno. Runa rebata hori ba to ene bone basola kala muhle mo. Horoske kha chana leka na koya puso ya na koe ifitile. Ya bo koloniale e mo huyona puso e o ene nyuwa di dzonpele, zer ne ranaleso ne di dzonpele zede okona kubonoa ku di mining, jala kaha ni fela runa la Matrosana. Lina di di mining di 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 nzi, me ba to kaba basola kala muhle mo kuchelile ki di dzonpele zera nanaleso ne moteka di mining ziro. Ri leza hori kanya se tamo se elo hori, se nali di petroliamo, ene se tamo se elo hori e. Ke sa puso, me mo ho sona, se rebata hori kudi re. Rebata hori ene sona kabu sona se, se taben se pola la di minerali, sidira kache so ya zone, kudi reki sa. Ba epo lelela ho chota, oli mo holi ha se esan zane ele mo se mo sa one, sa kaha, me ba choko mele hori. Di dzonpele zeneze, kaba di reki seze ba toba bu di chaba chaba. Ka hone, ba toba banzanjalo, kaba na sepe le kanya kuduela le kheto. Eh kaba si garama i gara belo, ahu senya kaha tikolo ho, kaba dira di tiroze di chana le zenuze. Rebata hori, horoske kha na jaga ha hona konsi, monako ene ifitile. Nka e we kape fano faki horu mula chomo onu o, do ta ha u kaha masi kanya hori eh ba toba tilo honali siabe, se seka na kan eh mo ho one. Kasika yoné jano njana rana li we se tamo sa tutale, rana se tamo sa shele, mara hoo sa diro kaza la ero kopanka yo ne, malabanale kanya hori. Ma i gara belo aska arule, loa mu di kamunza bu di chaba chaba. Le bone kabu bone, ba tilo ho felle za elo hori bariki seza di dzonpele zeneza runa, kudi merafiya bu di chaba chaba. Ri leza hori bantso. Banne, mona kenyaruna bantso ri dira bunzi dwa eighty percent. Ka jalo zeneze sidira hori raka ni ka, seresa arule zuing jaga ten percent, hori egaska yana e leka ne kama hozenelezing. Eh kape ho na libusu pi dwa hori do ta BEE, thulaka ene ya BEE, do ta kaina mosola, moba harona mona keni ene ya runa. Ri leza hori, the state-owned companies eh zipo ba chane to kusidira. Ba chane to hori, ba duela di profit, ba seka ba duela di royalties. Kibo kaboro rebata kobo baka nyabo, re Tito Mweni yo ene ele eh tonaya za di chalete monako ene ifitile. Wile asolo feza hori, di lo zede di chana le zeneze, zere le langa, itle ho baka ngwa, ratabona tiraha to ya zone. Me momo la chomo oro chero kona jano njana, hara bone sepe kaha se ana asuma ka, monako ene ifitile. Rebata fano fa ho kopale kani ene ya hori eh le le lo hori kesa kasi e itabeng nsi eh kache so ya mo Afrika Borua onu mo, ene kanya hori eh local content iskana vague. Ya abezze tata eh kopaho ri le jo me, di nka zayona ha di kuan. Rebata hori, eke i chalu sese nde kabu tralo, kan kaya zela e kudi lo ngayo ne, runajaga EFF, hara amoheli. Ibele kapero kopaho ri di chuezo zabo chokwa chokwa, diskeza di ruangke Minister ali nosi anule tata ya kudi dira. Ainé chuezo e di ruangke Parlamenta kabu yo ne, yote isengi mo cho ale mo we. Meri kopaho ri lefapalalo na jaga Committee. Zwee zwee batang and expect man khe, oka tangholo nabusu pi dwa, sesi dira ketsing haluta felle za lutile kama la chomo onu wa NPRDA. Hara rebata hori buela kape komoraha korotoan, teka rebata kuda katalo pele, mudilo nze, erle mo hozone kona jano njana. Eh ki di nsa seka rebata kudi nsa, ki emeze lokolaro na mudilastulo, rebata se tata eh chune ene ya hori. Erin se ma ikuda aruna, rese terenzera ntsi ze. Re akwadi le, rabara umaka di tlosi di kulete, zere rebata kubona di peto kama hozone. Ibele resolo fela hori ratada di bona, hela jaga haru kupile, fano fana ri dira kaza fela eh thoma ya hori. Re kula kudi nsa, le mu di kokano zatezo ya pachala zha.
Hey, kiala bohakamudilastulo, Chairperson and Honorable, we say thank you for being here. My name is Bishop Raifas Motweni. I'm residing in Jobetin. I'm a Wort Committee Member from Wort Thirty Seven. Actually, I'm here to to make a request on the bill as I'm supporting it. I will not gonna go through to the cloth, but I will make highlights on the following issues. The minister must operate in a proper way because the bill says the minister must decide. So I mean, we cannot have a bill that says the minister must advocate everything without the Constitution. So I feel that the minister mustn't, mustn't only constitution, mustn't decide without consulting the Constitution of South Africa. So we believe that that cloth there, it needs to be updated. And secondly, I've got a reason why I say so. For example, they say you will be amending a board, like what you call an agency for the bill. The agency that is gonna be there, it will be issuing licenses, right? And remember, we've got a problem in South Africa in this issue of licensing. I will give example with NHPRC. Currently, we just amended the law of Consumer Protection Bill. It also got a problem with the licensing where the NHPRC gives certificates to contractors. At the very same time, you will find that the bill says there must be proper houses, whereas NHPRC as a council fails to comply with the certificate issuing. They're still building, I don't know which, how can I call it? They're still building these lousy RDP houses under the same umbrella of NHPRC. It was my example. Now, the agency, according to me, it fails, it are failing agencies because when they issuing licenses, most of the time I think they're using method of being bribery or this method of not complying. So we need to emphasize on that, the agency must work and comply and make sure that there is accountability. In that, in that one also, I see on the bill itself, it doesn't give us benefits as community of South Africa. For example, you owning the land like a chief, but at the end of the day, when they come and do the mining, they ignore the environmental aspect of it. Even though it's being stipulated, it's still being a problem currently in South Africa. So we cannot ignore it where people are dying in terms of the population, I mean, the air pollution outside, where there is mining. Secondly, on that issue of environmental, I mean, the beneficiary of the community, you will find that it's ignoring, it doesn't even talk about it. That how will you say you giving fifty-one percent of the black-owned company rights to do mining, whereas you know that the black-owned companies, they don't have funding. They don't have money and they rely on stipends that they get from government. But on this bill, we don't talk about any funding to the youth development programs, for example. They don't talk about any funding for a hundred percent black-owned company or entrepreneur who's willing or any NGO that is willing to do mining. So in terms of that, I feel that all the youth and the other stakeholders that are supposed to be benefiting from the petroleum, they are being sidelined by the, by the bill. Because there is a criteria in which they were supposed to get implementation and the planning of this bill. I think it was, it was roughly made, not, there were not time taken to build the bill itself. So it is only the cloth that they are there, but you can see that there is no accountability on the bill. Lastly, I would like to emphasize this, it's very important. We are currently having a problem with the bills that are coming down from government. And all of the bills, they don't have accountability. I would like to emphasize the issue of accountability. If you can check currently, we are sitting here trying to allocate proper, proper accountabilities on the bill. But at the very same time, you will find that this bill is gonna be amended without coming back to us again. To say now we have done the following changes and then we are amending the bill, it's gonna be unused. But you're gonna just see it working without coming back to us as community of the, of South Africa. I thank you, Chairperson.
Kiala bohakamudilastulo, kila bohakata, eh akiri na lina lameke Bishop Motweni. And then kizamo Jobetin, ki Wort Committee Member, kizamo Wort Number Thirty Seven. Sorry, lebaha la chune ene ea hori takonza ma ikuda aruna mudilastulo. Eh mudilastulo, kinekibata kochalosa fano fa hori. Hona di di nka kolo zeneingara tahu di chalosa fano faze eno hori. Eh bili ene hara lebella, ekeze di tlosi zede di nzi tata. Ze konge mota agarata kudi chomo la horu buaga, serabata kusa chalosa fano fa. Nka e we fano fa ibuaga eh Minister. Hori Ministera kare ratize la eto ta, kuto o chane to hori adire tiro kayo ne. Eh Ministera kaka ki yana ene fela adira di chuezo. Eh o chane to hori, ha hori tamo kanya kuda di chuezo alibe hori. Constitution kaza mula tewarona, waring, ebele hona aganang adira di chuezo, isengi jaga hamala chomo onu ubuwa hori, o chane to eira. Nka e we ea bo chokwa, e re yakayisa fano faki hori. Eh hona le kanya ho kabolo la, ha di karloza mula chomo onu, me bo tata bo rebata kobo chalosa fano fa, bo amana le kanya konsi duha kadi license. Rana lema ta asengana kasepe do ta mona keni ene ya runa, hara tamo kanya di license. Eri kere kaskai kire example le kama kada warna wa NHPRC. So ine ilip mula chomo onu ubuaga siirele zoya ba ahimoma tu. So matata ar na leone, a NHPRC ere ba kela wana leone. Ken kaya hori, kudriswa di kontra ka, ze di farlo kaning and then serese elan choko kuhora basan zela ba ahamatu, ai le hori sentenke. Kahuala telo lamela wa na yote e bili lo ya hori, madu ano a ahwiya kama ho unzanzang. Ba felle za bantso ba tola pele ba ahamatu ama ma agua ta se. Bo tata ebena hori, NHPRC ha isi kari ma i gara belo. Ahu bo tiro e idiru lo kucha kama slitakurila se tamo sabone, esa di ruangka chwanelo. So ki nele seka i fela seka na nleso, leone bili ene ya runa. Hari lebelela, eh kaineli di benefiti zede nzi moba tong, baba tala lekela fela bama Afrika Borua. Esan zane inale ma koa kaza la e chana. Eh rera rera kaseka i ufele elo hori konge kana kose di we eh motyo lenko sa na mebo onale se sase lensa kaha. Ha hoo san zane kui le kataba kudura di tiroza mining, muhle filo la ala mo holo. No hoo sa di ruang di environmental assessment impact, hori toni itle hona kaza la enzanjang. But ha hoo snaku duha tiro enzanjalo. Ba toba tola pele baluala eh kan kaya ho kachala kamo wa. Galabaka la hori, di environmental assessments adiyadi ruang. Ene mula chomo onu warona, kama nza ma nekeli kiderisa di kaiteni zako bonsa hori. Ha matata asna kaha, amala chomo. Ha hona ba toba pe baba si karesu ama i gara belo, ahu bo tiro, esa di ruang sentenke. Ki cho kaha hori leone mula chomo onu o, uke hona di di pelele zede di su. Nka e we e koku muli kui le fano faki ya eh hori eh di tamo za ba toba bantso. Se elo hori dia operita ma na li di dzonpele zeneza di minerali, kadi ne ma di mudilastulo, kaba di sekeza kama di. Ba 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 i kela ka di stipend, zeba di kreyang ma di ona kaba anewe. Ene bili ha ibuis sepe ka kanya ho ba sekeza kama di, ilen bo tata jo bo tonajo. Kama nza ma hona njana, bantso ba ni le ten percent, di tamo za bantso di le ten percent. Ene di hona di di tamo di di nzeza bantso ba eno hori tata ba i kele di zehu di ra, ba era ta tiro ene ba ba ikuda hori ba bata. Me kahu akatiwi eh di tu, eh ene hori di ama basha di stakeholders, kaba dira la di program. Se eh ene hori di ta ba empower, hori ba hona hona ba toba katsan karo sentenke eh mo kanya eno ya di minerali. Ki bone bo tata jo rana le Joan fano fa, eh le kanya hori. Kahuatsewa na ko e leka ne ho kuala bili ene e, kudi ruang fela di tlosa kabu na ko. Be hoo san zengwe le kanya hori accountability etan. Be, hosa, zengwe, le, kanya, horu accountability, eh, tan na i. Ki, bo tata, su lo se. Nta, yabo fe lo, ralama, tata, ale, manzeka di bili, ze di nzi nzi, hona, ne, yana, dia, ta, di zuha, ko, ko, puso. Ba, tla ba, di to, tala, ro na, fano fa, bu nzi ba, zo ne. Me, ha, hona, epa ya, zo ne, eh, na, le, kanya, ho, si kari, swami ika ra belo, adi tiro za, ha, ho accountability, ha, iyo, mo, ho, zo ne. So, ro, ko pa, horu, lo, ze di nzi, yalo, ka chwezo, eh, di kabulola, eh, di ma melele, eh, hori. Di me la chomo enu yarona, eh, ne, kasi la, enzenjalo, ralama, hona, ho, za, karola, kasi la, esia me. Kiala boha, mudula stulo.
Thank you very much. And we appreciate that you followed our request to stick to the bill and not talk about other things that we are not here for. We want to thank you very much for that.
Eh, rabata, kholi, ralabaha, tata, ralaba, ha, iso, hori. Eh, di chwale, zelo, le, di nsa, di, di, amana, ho, le, mo la chomo onu warona, ha, la, kala, zama, zele, la, bua, kadi lo, ze di nzi, di nzi, sirne, re sa, ke la, Joan Fano.
And where you did not agree, some of you provided your views.
Me, di lo, di nze, ba, go balona, ba, ne, basa, du malan, le, le, zo ne, lu le, ta, di po, no, ta, lo, na, ka, zo ne.
That's what we are looking for.
Ki, sirne, re sa, ba, ta, se.
I'll just take, uh, this moment to deal with, uh, because Mr. Joseph Sessiani did not, uh, most of his things were questions directed to the committee.
Ki, rata, ho, za, mo, zu, zuana, fe la, ho, ta, takase, weka, hona, Red Joseph Sessiani, bu nzi ba, di tinsa, puwa, yah, ha, ho. Eh, ne, ili, di pozo, di pozo fe la, me, asan se, ma ikuto, aha, ha.
And I don't see him in the house, I think he left.
Hona, jana, jana, ha, ki, mo, ne, mo, ten, ha, ho, lo, ho, bo na, na, aka, zuha, aza, ma ili.
Now, I don't know what to, whether I must respond or I must leave it.
Eh, ne, ki, poza, horu, ake, to, ha, le, honzi yalo, ho, za, hongue, ki, chwale.
But maybe the nation has got interest on what he was asking.
Me, hongue, ma, lo, ko, alo, na, se, cha, ba, le, kaza, lo, ka, ta, ke la, di, kasa, ane, a, di, kasa.
So, his question was, uh, does the, the ten percent replace the twenty-six percent that is provided for in the mining charter?
Eh, poza, yaha, eh, ne, lo, horu, a, ten percent, de, jana, eh, chwanizo, hori. Eh, emi, se, ze, twenty-six percent, eh, hu, bu, wa, kaya, ne, mo, ten, ha, mining charter.
So, this is petroleum. You explore, you extract, you produce.
So, siru, bu, ka, sa, na, fano fa, ki, petroleum, oh, seresi, di ra, ra, epolola, harifesa, ra, chota, harifesa, ha, kataba, ber, kaksakumo, ya, yo ne.
In mining.
Harata, kamo, me, po, di mine.
You mine.
Oh, di ra, di tiro za, mo, me, po.
Process.
Ha, vesa wa, cha.
These are two different things.
So, ki, di lo, zepe, iti, ze di sa, chwaney.
We're talking about petroleum, not mining.
Eh, rubuyaka, eh, petroleum.
So, if Mr. Sessiani was not comfortable with the ten percent, he should say, in petroleum, I don't, I don't think ten percent is enough, others have done.
Ha, lo, horu, hongue, ona, eh, ikuto, ase, di ba, la, ka, ten percenti. Ho, ona, ashanizo, horu, a, chalo, sa, horu, harata, bo, kanya, ya, petroleum. Eh, ha, ki, di ba, la, ne, leone, hongue, abansha, chwezo, hori, eh, ne, ife.
He lost that opportunity.
Kajalo, oh, lakshadzake, chunu, eh, oh.
If he was here, we were going to afford him the opportunity to do so.
Ha, aka, ba, ali, te, fano fa, ne, re, na, chunu, eh, eh, mo, lakshadzake, horu, adire, jalo, hona, jana.
The second issue he asked me to try and clarify was on the right to explore and the right to produce.
Eh, nta, ewe, ka, enan, abata, horu, ki, mo, chalo, se, ze, yo ne. Eh, le, kanya, hona, di, chwanelo, za, ho, epolola, eh, di jompe lo, mo, le, chwanelo, yah, ho, di kakis.
I did say that the bill provides for the petroleum right that integrates the right to explore and produce.
Ki, leka, bua, horu, ba la, chomo onu, o, ora, na ya, eh, di chwanelo, za, ho, epolola, di jompe lo. Me, ili, chwanale, eh, ko, panje, le, chwanelo, yah, ho, di kakis, a, jaga, di.
I still say so.
Ki, san zane, ki, bua, la, jalo, ha, kia, fetoha.
The, the last speaker, Mr. Muthwin.
Eh, si, bui, sa, bo, sholo, eh, lenhosa.
Made a comment when he wrapped up that the problem is that the bill that we are dealing with may not come back to, eh, this area or to people so that they speak on the final version of what we would have deliberated on. Eh, often, at times, you see it becoming a law without coming back.
Uila, a, chalo, sa, fano fa, bo, tata, bo, banang, abata, ho, bo, chwale, horu, mo la, mo, chomo onu, o, rubua, kawa ne. Ho, kadi re, ha, horu, oske wa, boya, la, mo, huru, na, fa, hosa, na, ho, zengwa, di ma melelo, mo, ho ne. Ralama, bo, ro, bo, ne, fe la, osa, tu, zenzo, mu, tiro, osa, tu, idira, kama, lao. So, kian, kha, eh, ne, ala, kha, hui, chalo, sa, fao.
I would like to put him at ease.
Ki, bata, ho, di ra, raska, chwane, yaha, kana, kha, eh, oh.
That after this process, we are going to deliberate on the bill.
Horu, mo ra, ho, ka, thulo, kanya, eh, ri, chwane, fano fa, ri, tlo, ho, za, ma ya, ra, ho, cloth, la, kama, la, chomo onu.
We take the report to the National Assembly.
Ri, le, hu, isape, ho, yarona, hon, ko, kuwa, no, be, se, cha, ba.
We adopt it.
Harifesa, ri ya, amo, he la.
When we adopt it, it doesn't become a law.
Me, harri, amo, he la, ha, hori, hori, eh, ha, hona, mo, lao.
We take it to the, to, to the other House of Parliament called the National Council of Provinces.
Ri, isha, hon, ko, ewe, ka, pe, eh, la, telang, ya, Parliament, eh, ri, bi, za, hori, ki, the National Council of Provinces.
They will do the same exercise we are undertaking now.
Bo, ne, ba, tlo, ho, za ya, ma, za, ba, a, chwanan, fe la, ko, le, ara, chwe re, le, ro na, hona, jana.
So, they will go back to the people.
Kajalo, eh, ta, bo, la, ko, ba, tong.
Will they come to Matlosana?
Poza, kira, abatlo, keta, mo, Sana.
That's one thing I can't guarantee because
Ha, kia, hona, ko, thoma, mi, sa, se.
They will choose the areas they go to.
Ba, tlo, keta, horu, ba, ta, ya, mo, ma, fe, long, afi.
Just like we, we would have chosen to go to Zirast.
Jaga, hona, ya, kaba, ro, chopilo, ho, ho, yaku, Zirast.
Or anywhere else, but we came to Matlosana.
Kozamo, le, fe lo, lepe, fe la, fa, ta, sa, profesi, eh, no, ma, ro, chopilo, keta, mo, Matlosana.
But it's still consultation with the people.
Me, er, san zane, re, uka, eh, re, re, za, di, ha, gololo, eh, li, di, chwale, za, ba, tong.
I hope I'm clear on that.
Eh, kesa, fe la, hori, lan, kanya, senke, monche, eh, oh.
Thank you very much. I promised to have the second bite for people who were raising hands and we could not accommodate them on the chairs. I'm gonna start, I need ten people.
So, ki, leka, solifa, za, baba, ne, ba, ka, la, ke, bua.
Number two. No, 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 two. And three. Four at the back. Um, is it four? No, no, don't panic, my brother, don't panic, with a hat, don't panic. In fact, become number, is it four or five? Yeah, become number five, so that I concentrate, you, you, yes. Yeah, come and, so that I concentrate with, on people who are not panicking. So, is it five? Yeah, Ngumbo. No, I've not reached six, so there can't be six people. No, I refuse. There can't be six people, I, I, I'm still at five.
Okay.
So, if I did not point at you, I, I, I really...
Eh, waha, so, how you supi, veska, wa, ta, how supilo, oh, tle, hona, nja, na, jana.
Can I see those that are remaining, my brother? Yes. Eh, you there, I can't see the color of your jacket. Yourself there. Let, let me count the, the row and I'll come back to you. I note your hand. How many do we have? It's number two. So, it's eleven. Because there's a last hand on the audience, I'll take it and we have twelve, so that I don't have to open again. Are we clear? Is that fair? I'm normally a fair chairperson. So, this time, this is what we are going to do when it comes to time. It's not going to be endless. You are going to have three minutes, but I will stop you if you reach five. I won't stop you when you, eh, exceed three minutes, but you must know your time is three minutes. But at, at five, I stop you, there is no negotiations. Is that fair?
Waha, so, eh, elan, chokwa, horu, chokwa, le, na ya, me, zuzu, eh, le, meraro. Ha, okatola, me, zuzu, eh, meraro, wa, ho, fi, ta, kha, ho, fa, eh, ra, ho, hui, misa. Haru, hui, misa, zuheze, eh, haru, chwari, ngani, sa, no, kaha, kha, eh, oh, kataba, ho, fe, di, le, a, ru, gwan.
So, if I stop you, you must know, in the language of Soka, I would have given you two minutes injury time.
Ya, etara, ha, kia, hui, misa, obu, itu, horu, ho, chwale, le, ko, utu, kha, le, ngari, na, keta, be, ki, le, hona, me, zuzu, eh, le, me, bedia, mo, zuzu, hadi, ho, ba, lo.
Okay, the first person?
Wa, nta.
Iti, ndi, buli, se, avatlali, abalapapambile. Ndi, buli, se, ingutela, yonge, ya, Parliament, eh, se, apakuti. Si, buli, le, ltu, ba, wukubanis, bo, na, kalise, kuti, niso, umamela, iskalose, tu. Na, apa, dima, tingutumile, wakayelani, di, talapa, eti, kane, Extension Six. Eh, di, ze, apa, di, mela, eh, military veterans. And then, kusrakcha, se, tu, se, Kenneth Kaunda, eh, se, district. Iskalo, eh, sam, di, vile, ipili, ndivumela, na, na yo, ka, kulu, hundred percent. Kotwa, dinga, pume, mkolweni, ka, ngunginje, ndense, imi, se, kelo, eh, sikesa, tibana, na yo, pa, pambile. Wan, di bo na, ika, male, Petro, SA. Sikesa, tibana, na, le, ndo, iteta, ngalendo, ye, Petro's SA. Isiza, ngomnomza, na, popomole, fe, ngelo, tlaysha. Eh, eh, na, ye, omnomza, na, ke, pima, patwe, ongu, de, late, o, kwa, ngo, ku. Apa, bebe, nika, eh, military veterans, iku, nya, lo, kuti, benze, eh, corporatives. Ba, kale, ba, zenzelime, se, benzinga, azu, ba, suze, ku, zo, kotwa, gesa, ba, ne, ngwaki, kulo, ndo. Eh, asisange, si, suze, ndo, songe, kulo, ndo, kwa, fuma, na, ba, tilenje. Ti, na, 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 ku, si, se, kona, apa, si, se, distributed, na, ngo, ku. Eh, usuke, la, xeni, ngwabi, ndile, ndile, uku, ba, si, se, kule, ndao. Inga, ti, abase, ma, kunyeni, abalungi, sa, es, nda, ba, ze, tu. Ba, kale, benze, ndo, etu, ka, ku, tle, ubandu, ku, fe, ka, ku, tle, slalo, uti. Ne, nize, nikale, nenzie, workshops, uku, ba, abantu, ba, fundi, swai, uku, ba, ba, sa, zo, uteta, ngando, ni. Asikange, si, tibana, na, lo, workshop, uti, na, ndao. Si, fungulu, nje, kusitwa, na, ansin, ndo, apa, si, kela, ilungu, swai, ka, ku, tle, lo, ndo. Isi, se, iski, manen, tonipo, ku, uti, singa, abantu, ba, se, kala, i. Eh, i workshops, ne, training, ne, skills. Si, kelas, weko, na, kule, ndo, ya, le, pili, si, 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 fuma, ne, uluas. Olunzu, ulu, si, si, fundi, le, si, ku, file, na, we, slalo, kende, zuha, yako. Si, avumela, na, na, we, si, a, tonipa, ndu, niza, ngai, ba, ndu, ini. Ngoba, aliku, nya, na, kuti, singa, ma, military veterans, ne, association, is, eh, tu. Si, avuma, si, avaa, apa, kutetwa, na, ngetan, percent. Na, lapa, ekhaleni, di, te, ku, ndinga, pume, mkolweni, slalo, wa, mo, ndivumela, kulo, ndao. Ku, mining industry, es, lapa, es, go, anglo, American, no, no, anglo, gold. Oh, ko, kuma, ne, kusitwa, eh, military veterans, ne, ten percent. Na, ukonkwa, sa, kulo, mnyango, ukonzo, ka, mnye, kutwa, bu, sa, kulo, a, mnyango. Asika, fuma, ne, na, ngo, ku, kuba, lo, ten percenti, yah, chwanan, nda, uni. Le, na, ni, niza, ngai, uku, ba, ne, sinika, elo, kunya, uku, ba, si, si, military veterans, na, abantu, bu, kala. Singa, senza, sa, su, sa, kule, ndo, nize, ngai, ona, mlanje. Ipili, nze, ka, kulu, ku, fa, ndivumela, na, na, yo, nje. Na, sino, ilandelela, nges, telo, sa, bandu, abakona, apa, apa, sebe, kamle, ku, yo, di, a, kubulela, ta, eh, kosi.
Greetings to the residents and the parliamentary committee. And thank you so much for coming to us to educate us about the bill. My name is Dumile Yelani, I am from Dechane Extension Six. I am from the military veterans in the Kenneth Kaunda District. I agree hundred percent with the bill, but may I please be allowed to offer them from the bill and make examples that we've experienced from the past? Eh, Popomulife and the late Kepi Muzwe came here to tell us about the same bill of the petroleum and the petrol. But, um, until today, um, nothing has, um, come. And in the past, they were, they, they came here to say they're giving us authority as the military veterans to start our own corporatives or businesses. Not all of us benefited from all of those corporatives. We are still here and we are still distribute with not, nothing to show. I wish that the authorities can help us with that project first before we move into this one. Jefferson, as you said before, we had workshops that, um, were conducted to make sure that everyone in the residence, um, understands the bill, but that did not happen in this area. We therefore requesting that we have workshops and trainings so that we can get deeper understanding of what this bill is all about and we, we understand it better. We are grateful that you came here and also we see that there is a ten percent that you are talking about in the bill. In the mining's, um, industry, they have been telling us and promising us that we will get ten percent shares, but nothing is coming, we've been knocking in different doors and, um, no one is giving us, uh, proper information on, on how we should, um, be able to get this ten percent that they have promised us. I fully agree with the bill, but only if we follow everything that is being said in the bill. I thank you.
Ndi, abulela, ge, thuba, nindipaso, na, ndimuli, balele, nzi, bele, nipuma, eh, Jo Betino. I'm a ward committee, I'm a ward twelve. Eh, ben, elu, bu, za, kule, bili, le, ndibona, ipili, iti, ya, tetaka, zini, zinto, kotwa, andiva, apa, kupa, lo, hona, kuti. Eh, raw materials, es, is, fuma, na, kule, minerals, resources, resources, eh, za, lape, South Africa, si, be, kwa, api. Si, pe, no, api, si, se, change, wa, api. So, iba, ina, agi, kuti, si, be, ne, minerals, es, niji, kanga, aka. Petroleum, eh, oil, eh, gold, si, alandelela, na, kugula, eh, platinum, kotwa, as, se, benzo, api. Ka, di, bu, se, benzo, zia, api. As, is, se, benzelitina, abantu, ba, slalo, kvi, chan, ne, is, my. Si, be, ka, ubita, abantu, ba, ku, dena, is, my. Ti, na, abantu, ba, kvi, chan, ne, is, my, es, as, na, and, es, na, tu, kuti, za, ilata, le, iman, si, se, benzel, ngelo, slo, ba, kuti. Iman, si, 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 ronjo, apa, slalo, kona. Unemployment is too high. Crime is too high. Unicult society is too high. Kotata, get ten percent, kotwa, ma, di, se, sense, and, don, gas, fuma, ningu, le, ku. So, empower, and, don, abantu, ba, mnyama, kuti.
Chéperson, laissez-moi commencer par remercier vous. Je m'appelle Khumazo Khayeje, de Jobetina, Oat24. J'apprécie déjà cette présence et je souhaite que votre visite nous fasse du bien. Et je souhaite aussi que ce projet aide au mieux les Afriquains à vivre. Chéperson, je vais essayer de répondre au plus vite possible. J'ai entendu que vous parliez de pétrole et de minéraux. Pour moi, ce n'est pas la première fois que je parle de ce sujet. J'ai aussi entendu parler de ça de mon cousin dans le passé. Mais je ne savais pas exactement quel est le sens de ce pétrole ou qu'il contient. Surtout en termes de comment on acquiert des licences pour une entreprise, au moins, afin que nous puissions survivre à ces entreprises. Si je peux juste avoir une clarté ou une assistance en termes de comment nous atteignons ces licences, afin que nous puissions également participer et contribuer à l'économie en ayant ces entreprises en fonctionnement. Enfin, chéperson, nous, en tant que jeunes, sommes souffrants parce qu'il n'y a pas d'argent. Les gens sont pauvres, il n'y a pas de source de vie, il n'y a pas de workshops. Il n'y a en fait rien que le gouvernement nous apporte en tant que personnes pour développer nous-mêmes afin que nous puissions survivre. Donc, c'est mon demande que vous puissiez voir, vous savez, de ramener ces workshops à la mère et à l'âge adulte, y compris nos personnes âgées, afin que, à mesure qu'ils grandissent, ils puissent en quelque sorte aider eux-mêmes, donc je pense que ces workshops, si vous pouvez simplement mettre du effort pour s'assurer que les gens soient orientés, qu'ils sont compétents, cela sera très bénéfique pour le reste des citoyens en Afrique du Sud. Merci.
Dumeela, vous êtes une organisation de MaKua et de WAMUa. Chéperson, je suis venu vous parler de notre déclaration comme MaKua, le branchement de l'ex-entreprise, mais vous avez dit que vous avez fait un appel. Chéperson, vous avez dit que 90% de la responsabilité est à MaKua. Vous avez dit que 90% de la responsabilité est à MaKua. Quelle est la raison pour laquelle vous avez fait ça? Deuxième chose, en tant que femme noire, Rona, on demande 40%. On demande 40%. Et vous avez dit que 10% est à MaKua. Comment pouvez-vous justifier pourquoi vous nous donnerez seulement 10%? Comment pouvez-vous... 10% est à MaKua. On demande 10%. Et vous avez dit que Rona, en tant que MaKua et WAMUa, rejettent 10% parce que les communautés disent que c'est trop. Jusqu'à ce que les ressources communautaires soient à la limite, alors vous avez dit 10%. Mais pour le moment, nous disons non à 10% seulement. Et puis, vous avez dit que je me demande pourquoi on donne de pétrole et de minéraux? Parce que, comment, chéperson, nous disons que nous donnons de pétrole jusqu'à la fin de l'année, même si on a des mines de fer. Jusqu'à ce que le fer ne soit plus présent.
Merci beaucoup, ché. Répétez-moi le nom. Oui, mon nom est Mahadima Happy. Je suis de l'organisation que je représente et son nom est MaKua. Chéperson, le temps que vous nous avez donné pour exprimer nos sentiments est vraiment très court. Nous avons beaucoup à dire. Mais ce que nous ne serons pas capables de faire en tant qu'organisation que nous représentons, nous ne serons pas capables de soumettre notre déclaration en toute entité. Nous le ferons après. Mais ce que je vais faire, c'est juste vous donner certains des points de vue des choses que nous voulons dire dans notre soumission ici. Tout d'abord, ce que je veux savoir, j'ai été en train de me demander, j'ai entendu que vous parliez de 90%. Et puis vous dites qu'à un certain moment, nous devons juste donner notre input, nous devons juste poser des questions. Mais je vais vous demander ce qui va se passer avec ce 90%. Un autre point est que, en tant que femmes noires, nous demandons 40% pour nous-mêmes, seulement pour nous, en tant que femmes. C'est exactement ce que je voudrais vous demander. Vous avez aussi parlé, ché, de 10%. Maintenant, je me demande pourquoi seulement 10% parmi tant de percentages différentes que vous auriez pu penser et considérer? Pourquoi nous donner seulement 10%, et pas rien de différent? Parce que vous avez choisi de nous donner 10% parmi tous ces 10. En tant que organisation MaKua et de WAMUa, je veux dire très clairement que nous rejettons ce projet jusqu'à ce que vous vous donnez le temps de nous expliquer en pleine partie, de A à Z, afin que nous puissions comprendre tout. C'est seulement alors que nous allons soutenir le projet. Mon dernier point, point numéro cinq. Nous voulons savoir exactement pourquoi vous avez décidé de faire une séparation entre pétrole et minéraux? Pourquoi vous faites ça? Parce que vous avez parlé du fait que nous pouvons extraire ça, nous pouvons l'avoir développé et tout ça. Mais bien sûr, nous avons besoin de toute cette information qui peut nous permettre de soutenir le projet. Donc, c'est notre soumission courte pour le moment. Merci, ché.
Dumeela, je suis membre de l'ANCU FLEAK et membre de l'Association des Lawyers Noires dans l'université de Nord-Ouest, Bocistoum Campus. Chéperson, ici, il y a une définition qui est clarifiée que quand vous parlez de personnes noires, vous parlez de entreprises qui ont 51% de propriété noire. Avec cette provision particulière que vous proposez, cela signifie que, en réalité, nous pourrions finir avec une situation où la participation des personnes noires pourrait être juste 6% à cause de la façon dont vous avez défini les personnes noires. Nous savons que les personnes noires font la majorité de la population en Afrique du Sud. Et nous sommes toujours à l'aise avec les problèmes de distribution équitable de l'argent. Donc, la façon dont vous avez défini 51%, je veux dire le 10%, devient contre-productif à cause du coût que le gouvernement prend pour dire que nous allons essayer de réduire l'incumptance à cause de... Dans le passé, le gouvernement appartéit avait mis en place l'économie de telle manière que les personnes noires étaient exclues de participer à l'économie médicale. Donc, ma soumission, ché, est que nous devons maintenant essayer de redefinir comment vous avez défini les personnes noires dans ce projet particulier. Et puis aussi, en allant à ce sujet, chéperson, pour la simpleté, permettez-moi d'utiliser une illustration. Imaginez que des ressources ont été trouvées dans votre maison. Et puis, vos tantes, dans ce cas, en analogie, vous êtes vos tantes, elles vous sont envoyées comme les enfants qui vivent dans la maison. Et puis vous êtes dit que, parmi les ressources trouvées, vous, en tant que enfant, allez obtenir 10%. Vos parents vont obtenir 20%. Et puis la partie restante, la majorité, sera donnée aux personnes de l'extérieur. Je crois que vous commencez à traiter vos parents, je veux dire vos tantes, vous êtes vos tantes dans cette situation, avec le suspecte, de dire: "Comment vous venez de nous et vous nous dites que nous allons obtenir 10% en tant que enfants, et nos parents vont obtenir 20%? Et puis cette autre majorité, cette partie, viendra d'une autre place?" Et nous savons quand nous disons "d'une autre place", que ce sont des entreprises étrangères. Shell est une entreprise britannique, Total est une entreprise française. Et puis nous savons très bien que ce sont les gens qui sont en meilleure position pour prendre l'opportunité de ces ressources, de pétrole, que vous avez trouvées. Donc, ma soumission, ché, est que je voudrais soutenir ce que l'effort fait le EFF. Pour dire que nous devons faire notre mieux en tant que pays pour posséder nos propres ressources. Et pour nous faire faire ça, ce sera un pas qui nous exigera, premièrement, à comprendre que nous ne sommes pas, premièrement, en position de... Je veux dire, la position et les compétences, nous n'en avons pas encore. Donc, premièrement, nous devons mettre en place le fonds de souveraineté statéque pour s'assurer que nous avons le muscle financier pour pouvoir soutenir des entreprises ou même le même état pour posséder ces minéraux particuliers. Et quand je dis "posséder", c'est parce que vous avez expliqué que c'est un trois pas. Nous sommes à l'aise avec l'extraction, puis nous allons à l'aise avec le traitement, puis nous allons à l'aise avec le retail. Nous aimerions voir l'Afrique du Sud aussi, avoir son propre retail en termes de pétrole. Donc, quand vous allez en Afrique du Sud et quand vous allez dans des pays comme Mozambique, dans la région Sadek, vous pouvez voir une particularité de retail qui vend pétrole qui est en fait une entreprise afriqueaine. Et enfin, ché, quand nous parlons d'investissement, quiconque qui fait un investissement, si je fais un investissement de 10% rent, cela signifie que je prévois que je vais obtenir plus de 10% rent de tout ce que j'ai fait. Donc, ce problème des investisseurs étrangers est un problème inquiétant parce que cela signifie que, même si l'argent pourrait venir dans le pays maintenant, plus tard, plus d'argent vivra dans le pays, ce qui crée maintenant un problème en termes de force de monnaie de notre rent. Donc, ce sera beaucoup mieux, chéperson, que nous ayons notre mieux quand nous parlons de l'intérêt de ce projet particulier. L'Afrique du Sud doit être capable de retenir la majorité des actions dans ce projet particulier. Et puis je réitérerai encore sur un problème des personnes noires. Que nous devons s'assurer que nous autorisons plus de personnes noires obtenir un parti dans ce projet en s'assurant que la définition de ce projet est redefinie afin qu'elle puisse réunir les personnes noires, celles qui sont natives de l'Afrique du Sud, mais pas seulement natives, je veux dire en termes de peau. Parce que cela ne me convient pas vraiment de voir comment vous l'avez défini.
Merci. Merci. Je regrette que je commence avec vous en tant que jeune homme. Mes apologies. Le temps est fini.
Merci. Je suis venu vous parler de l'ANCU FLEAK et de l'ONF. Vous avez dit que vous avez découvert que vous avez refusé. Vous avez dit que vous avez refusé. Vous avez dit que vous avez découvert que vous avez refusé. Vous avez dit 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 que vous avez refusé.
...
And by so saying, I will also introduce myself. My name is Edward Moschomo. I'm coming from Le Balin township in Watnai. Chairperson, let me, let me submit few concerns that I have here. Especially on the old buildings that you have in Le Balin. This also includes some filling stations that are not operational. And they used to be operational back then, but now there's no attention to such buildings. So I so wish that attention could be paid into this filling station and all buildings, so that they can be operational again. For the purpose of, of course, saving the people of Le Balin, Le Balin and Makwasi town. Secondly, we, we have an area here called Matikirin. It's a very popular area that is well known of, of, of being rich in diamonds. So there's some deep insights in, 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 in Matikirin that I also think that if, if you, if you can see to it that there's some developments in that area. You know, to, to bring it up to speed again, so that it can be operational. It will create more jobs for, for, for the youth. Government also, I believe that you are more responsible to ensure that our youth is supported in terms of skills refinement. And to make sure that we as youth, we possess the necessary skills that, that can help us to, to be better people in society. So we, we urge with you that please support us. We see that a lot of our people that, that want to school, our youth that went to school, they only have metrics. And they can barely do nothing with just a metric certificate. So we, we need those critical skills, so that we, we, we can be better. Fourthly, we are struggling with water in our area, in Le Balin. However, there's a borehole that is also not being paid attention to. So if this borehole can also be renovated or be refined, so that we can start drinking water from that borehole, because it's just standing there. But currently, we don't, we don't benefit anything from such boreholes. My last point, Chairperson, is about the training station, also in Mabaling, that is also not, not, not operational. So we also need the station to, to be operational again, so that, so that we can start using the train in, in, in Mabaling. I support the build and I'll be very happy if my points can be taken into consideration. So I really appreciate your time that you gave me. I know that you gave me three minutes, but with these words, I really appreciate everything. Thank you.
Revolutionary greetings to the honourable members in the house. My name is William Molapo, from National Association of Artisanal Miners. Kaburipana, ke, ke, watake, tora, ke, tora, in terms of the bill. It's mula kara, I don't support it, for the mere fact that the committee comes with a documented bill, drafted bill, whereby Chairperson Anna Atsimula, he said, "You came here to source the knowledge from us in this participation." So that whatever, selo, goring, retakasone, as the house, isn't something that is solid that you are going to endorse, like consolidated, then you endorse it into the bill. But, ya, no, imkopisatokwa, ya, no, kora, le, ta, le, le, drati le. Enali ten percent, ten percent, you le, zaka. Because, not so simply consolidated out of the percentage that is debatable from the house, but you came with your ten percent, it's a guy, if you clearly am more. Hence, you are saying you are here to source the knowledge from us as the house in this participation. So I think, Karaboya Ting, Retagriya, Yaka de la Taspika, Anavu, Wakhore, whenever lahukonsoledita, solofelokore, you'll come back to us. Reter, roko, bona, whatever that you are saying here, like exercise. And now, I have another problem. Yes, the bill, ya, passi siyo, but on the ground, it's not exercised. I can attest to that. We had a number of meetings with DMRE and the mining giants in this area, seeking an opportunity. Elorong, it's stated on the bill, where we can identify a portion, elorong, reka, exerciser, what is in the bill, selorong, specifically, it's our core business, as Nam. But now, kudalua, thomenjeri, karona, kasu, sesu, kwezi, mobili. And now, you said, lo, na, le, ba, mo, lau, lau, endorse, lead court, judiciary. But, mo, lau, our exerciseri, kidoz, the very same department of minerals. We went there, identified the portion, haru, sonsera, bereke, kuki, no, rekotinta, dikts. Kamala, olin, te, olu, kuru, kobe, wa, kilo. But tomorrow doesn't favor us. Akitu, kikati, kanya, kore, ke, ke, so, sesu, ne, si, si, buya, mobile, yvila, kore, reta, bezaba, nakavakopapa, zari, babo. If the apartheid regime, ilaya, sotla, ba, 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 holo, baron, what's on there, sotla, hekka, what is right for the us? Karilo, telo, kore, we are here to participate, or, be, be, far, tomorrow. I just so wish, for whatever, serisi, wa, or, serisi, in black and white, can we have people we can liaise with us? And come and check, kore, kweza, kalan, in the ground? You must come to us and check what is happening in the ground. I, I humbly appeal with you, can you assign someone? Olur, we can liaise, liene. Added to the meeting, wa, ronali, DMRE and Harmoni. Because of now, they are telling us, or, they seek a clarity in terms of the bill, so that we can operate the portion area identically. We are humbly, humbly, humbly appealing from you. Or do your job, we'll do our job, we'll assist you. Howle, moto, how we paid it? Hence, you are here to source the knowledge from us. I submit.
Chairperson, my name is William Molapo. I'm gonna try to be brief, Chairperson, as William Molapo. You know, I'm, I'm getting a headache actually from having read this bill. Because you said, you came here to source the knowledge from the people. Lirilala, wata, kui, tuta, koto, koba, ahi, no, kuu, kua, di, kopa, za, baha, ahi. But you come here with a bill already drafted. So my question is, where do you get all these inputs? If you did not talk to us, let's, I already decide deal on the bill to say, this is the document and we should support the ten percent. So to me, this is, this is uncalled for. You should have, is that, before you consider to come to the people, with that document drafted already, you should have consulted the public in large. And only then, with the submission from the, from the public, then you can devise a document called this bill. Thirdly, previously, we had some meetings with the DM, DMRE, with the aim of identifying some portions in our area, so that whatever that is contained on the bill can be also exercised on the ground. It's, it's so unfortunate that whatever that you discuss in this bill, is not really applicable on the ground. We don't see any, what, what is contained on the bill being practical on the ground. I would also like to mention the laws that you're drafting with, with the judiciary, it's failing us. We can't, we, we are not, we don't, we don't even have the confidence in our laws, actually, because we don't see how, how do they benefit the rest of the people. You know, it's so sad that, of course, we know that with the apartheid regime, our parents suffered, but we cannot be suffering also as youth. So we don't want to undergo the same pain that our parents, you know, they, they had to experience with apartheid regime. So I'm not, I'm not angry, I'm not shouting, I'm not, I'm just politely asking that you support to us, come to, come to the people, you know. And I think we need a liaison person that can come and talk to the, to the community. You know, when, when we have somebody that we can rely on, that, that can take our word to the parliament, perhaps that, that will assist us, you know, very good, because we need jobs, but, but we don't know who to talk to, because we don't have any liaison person. So we are pleading with you, Chairperson and your committee, that you need to take us, see us and come, come to the community. That's basically that. Thank you very much.
Dumela, mototlere, mudulasutulo, le parlamenté, tlete. Lamelina, ke, ze, kiele, palazi. Ramahole. Ke, twa, koleko, di, CPA, inzepeedi. Se, zamile, indao, communal property. Le, kanye, sa, communal property, tjo, tlete. Di, moma, kwasi, hills, si, under, Dr. Kenneth, ka, under, district. Le, ba, kala, kolo, la, ronai, kile, le, le, requisitze, ngaba, khaichu. Eh, remorahe, wa, matiki. Re, le, morahe, wa, matiki, la, na, retla, wa, ke, si, we, si, la, kore, rasbona. La, se, buwa, moten, kabili, mo. Motlos, formo, le, mo, di, taten, tjo, tesa, licensing, ledi, permits. Re, na, le, botata. Re, ledi CPA, mota, sa, kabushwe. Botata, ba, ronai, kia, kore. Extraction, ele, process, edi, wa, ngaditema. Ha, etesin, tle, mo, koro, na, ba, khaichu. Is, atesin, tle, kati, lenze, nja. The fifty-one percent, dele, renani, o, ne, in the permits and the licenses. Le, forty-nine percent, dele, na, yang, yo, twa, ngon, tja, atis, te, di, wa, mo, koro. Kahua, na, le, ze, re, mo, koro, na, ba, khaichu. Ha, ri, tle, lesson, tle, mo, kio. Recuperate from the fifty-one percent, etla, kusedi, wa, koo, seventy percent. Le, ba, kala, kolo, la, ronai, kore, etla, kusedi, wa, tja, kia, kore. Ha, ena, maadi. It's, e, le, tjo, maadi, a, kore, refund, di, we. Yo, tli, le, ngati, ro, yo, yo, forty-nine percent. And, we, only thirty percent, kuri, te, ina, skilli, se, o, atle, kusisi, a, motu, lo, nyarun. Le, ba, kala, kolo, kore, re, re, thirty percent. Re, be, le, zor, ayempawa, refela, abarute, a, develop, e, those communities. Kore, in the seventy percent, er, na, re, kriya. Re, kona, kui, iti, ra, ra, di, tu, ro, tse, ba, khaichu. Ha, re, kona, kudi, iti, re, la, kan, tja, kore. Tjo, tse, tse, di, nsiwa, mo, di, pleken, za, ronak, kosa, mo, di, tu, lo, za, ronak. Di, a, ze, wa, di, siwa, kudi, na, kentze, di, kon, tle. Ha, ru, ngue, le, re, le, ba, twa, South Africa. Bonajang, kore, ba, na, ba, ronak, ba, nse, a. Utswa, kustane, te, ne, ha, na, direction, a, kore, akadila, eh. Ke, mu, twa, mme, ha, na, direction, a, kore, akadila, eh.
Kopa, ro, simula, kon, tlen, eh?
Mm-hmm.
Utsu, mula, kon, tlen, eno, u, es, ta, raka, kono, kua, zara, sente, karabato.
Okay.
So, but the increase from fifty-one to seventy, forty-one, forty-nine percent.
Thirty percent.
Two, thirty percent, skills, three, man. What about, son, zem, e, nde?
Akarabas, re, skill, they just have to empower and develop us from our own seventy percent, if it's funded. Extraction process, editema, nzerbu, angatwa, ne, under, the mining community, amatiki, riba, khaichu. Di CPA, zepedisi, zamile, le, kanye, sa. Recopagatwa, e, tje, kore, remote loss, number four. E, bu, angadi, license, ledi, permit. The fifty-one percent, dele, ra, kri, eri, be, tje. Etla, kusedi, wa, to seventy percent. The forty-nine percent.
Eh, no, don't start afresh, because your issues have been recorded. I, I, that's why I remember that you made a suggestion from fifty percent to, to, to seventy percent. Eh, start where you, you, you got disturbed by the light.
I thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Ma, ba, karo, na, kore, re, re, seventy percent, e, kia, kore. Re, na, le, ba, na, baile, kore, in those communities. Re, na, le, bomme, baile, kore, in those communities. Kahua, na, kopi, mo, ba, tja, lan, te, ngabo, tse. Kan, tja, kore, yo, eno, kore, utlo, kudi, ra, motu, lo, nse, za, ronati. Eda, forty-nine percent, ye, e, lo, kore, be, tje. E, ronarabatla, kore, le, monetit. Re, ba, tla, fe, la, skilli, se, o, sa, tlen, gason. Are, empawa, re, gason, eh? Re, kona, kudi, develop our own communities in this seventy percent, if it's funded. And, le, re, o, le, o, la, ten percent, eri, bona, mota, se, mo, mota, sa, kabili. Eri, be, tje. Recopa, etla, kusedi, wa, koo, di. Ma, ba, karo, na, kia, kore, SLP, eri, kriya, in these rural communities. Ha, eri, a, ne, le, ba, khaichu. Is, aran, eh, le, recopa, kore, etla, kusedi, wa, to fifty percent. Le, ba, kala, koro, kore, e, am, kela, di, gender, zo, o, o, ke. E, payast, e, am, kela, ba, ba, le, fe, la, this ten percent. Mo, koro, na, ha, e, kona, kore, e, kara, ne, la, koo, tle, koo, tle. So, recopa, etla, re, we, to fifty percent, kudi, la, kore. This development, dele, bu, angadi, in the rural communities. I, u, ngue, le, South Africa, not, moto, twa, ngon, tle, katu, tje. You [inaudible] South Africa, not [inaudible]. [speaking Afrika] [speaking Afrika] Taking of the diamond away from our own land. [speaking Afrika] It's a micro-concurrence. The mining, as we speak, 363 hectares are litigated. 1,670 hectares are litigiated in these two communities. At the hips and hills and dixterian [inaudible]. [speaking Afrika] This rehabilitation has never been done yet. [speaking Afrika] 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 In our respective places. I thank you and submit. Chairperson, my name is Ezekiel Ramahole. Greetings. I'm from... Where is he coming from? By the way, but I'm representing two projects that we had, which is Sizamile Indao Properties and Kanyisa Community Properties. My concern, the first one is based on clause number four that talks about licensing and accrediting people for to be accepted to run with the mines and all. We are worried about the percentages that are written in this document. So I strongly suggest that there must be an increase from 50% to 70%. And obviously, this 70% will be able to empower our children and women.
Chair, I think our minister is giving too much power. Your ruler. Because why in this situation?
Your name first?
Okay, my name is Sianda Noyila. I'm coming from Umsumshane. Chair, our minister is giving too much power. If our minister is appointing a committee, I think, Chair, our minister [speaking Afrika] [speaking Afrika] [speaking Afrika] Like, youth, like, youth is good, good innovation. [speaking Afrika] [speaking Afrika] Of course, me, in it, youth in South Africa is very hungry, sir. Real is very hungry, because there's scarcity of jobs. So if petroleum can give us a chance, of course, we need better skills. I'm telling you, South Africa can go far. And [inaudible]. Like, [inaudible]. So, [inaudible]. So, see, South Africa, mineral resources is [inaudible]. Like, even me, like, [inaudible]. [inaudible]. After [inaudible]. [inaudible]. So I didn't even go to school for that, sir. It's just [inaudible]. After, when the [inaudible]. Thank you.
Greetings, Chairperson and the committee. My name is Sianda Noyila. Sianda, yes. I think the minister is being given too much power. So if the minister appoints the committee, he should not be allowed to elect people who are in power. He should elect people who are intelligent. Especially if he can elect the youth, because the youth is intelligent and the chance of a brighter future in this project will be very high. And if the youth is given a chance to be in this petroleum industry, this industry will flourish, because the youth will come out with very perfect ideas. And then the businesses should stop, should not be given to the white monopoly capital, because those people do not empower other people, they just empower themselves. The youth needs to be given skills and they need to be given chances, so that the youth of this country can flourish and do things better. At some point, I was in a project where we were dealing with petrol. I did not go to school for that project, but it was just a skill that I was given. So I am suggesting that the youth should be given skills at all times, so that the youth can flourish as much as they can. Thank you so much.
Yes, Chair, I support the pills.
Thank you very much, good people. You'll notice that time is really against us. The reason sometimes I'm forced to give you three minutes is because the interpreters also need that three minutes. So it becomes six. If I give you five, it becomes ten. Uh, but let me thank all the inputs made, even the ones that were made for mining and not petroleum. We have recorded them and they will assist us on our work forward. I just want to deal with a few issues. The first one would be from Meh Mohapi Mahadi. I did not say, "Don't speak about 90% or 10%." I said, "When you speak about 90% or you don't want 10%, tell us what you want." In other words, I was saying, "Don't complain." Show your dissatisfaction and give what your feelings are. I'm correcting this, because these public participations are recorded. I don't want to go out as a person who dictated what people must say, because I did not. But I'm very happy that at the end you made proposals and we have taken them into consideration. Mr. Karabo Mushwan.
[speaking Afrika]
Well, I will forgive a lot of people, because some came late and it's not of their doing. But those who are here will remember that I took time to explain the difference between legislature, government, and judiciary. The reason I was doing that was precisely because I wanted you to understand that we make laws, we don't implement laws. We are the legislature, we are not government, we are not the department. And this goes for Mr. William. I did not get his surname. The reason we are coming to you with this bill is because the department drafted this, can I, yeah, drafted this bill, took it to cabinet, and finally approved by cabinet to come to parliament. We are saying, as parliament, we are taking this bill back to the people. We are not responsible for the 10% or the 20%. We are saying, before we touch it, we are taking it back to the people for the people to say, "We don't want that 10%. We want so-and-so." So we are not coming with the 10%, good people. We are not responsible for the 10%. That's why we are coming to the people. When you say, "Come to the ground," this is what we're doing. We are coming to the ground, to the people, to consult to the people about a bill we have not drafted. That is why you will find that I personally may not be in agreement with the 10% or the 20%, myself. I'm speaking about myself, not everyone here. I may not be in agreement with 10%. But it's not for me to come and dictate to you what is it that you want, because I did not draft the bill. I want you to tell me what is a reasonable percentage. I wanted to say to Mr. Karabo Mushwan, we are a very good uncle ourselves. Because when there are resources in your house, you are told that you must sell them for 10%. We, as uncles, are asking you, Mjana, do you agree? And you must tell Abu Malume, "Do they agree? Do you agree?" That's what we are here for. So we are very good uncles. [speaking Afrika] All in all, good people, we are saying, we appreciate your inputs. We are not the department. We are parliament and we are on the ground to get your views on enriching this bill or rejecting the bill. That's what we are here for and nothing else. Lastly, we want to respect you by apologizing for the load shedding. Actually, there is no load shedding as we speak. There is faulty system in the hall, which we can't be responsible for. The municipality ought to take responsibility for that, but we are apologizing on their behalf. We brought our own generator, that's why we are having lights. Actually, all the time that you had light, it was because we brought a generator. So however, we will take responsibility. We apologize on their behalf, because we asked them to give us a hall. We probably should have done due diligence to see or know whether there are problems or there are no problems. So we take responsibility. With that said, I will request that everyone stays seated. There will be people who come in to offer you some refreshments before you go home. And I will request sound and vision that this light, when we are gone, it goes that side, so that the work that must happen that side happens properly. We thank you very much. This meeting is urgent.